We have a planning, programming, and zoning commission meeting to order. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda for June 3, 2014.
I'd actually like to make a motion, if we could, to move items D and F up in the agenda so we can get those folks -- it looks like it's going to be a lengthier meeting. We can get those folks to their business and beyond.
Second?
Moved and seconded to move items D, which is an encroachment request, and items F, which is an appeal, to the top of the list. All the rest just fall in order. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, on to our next item.
Who seconded that? Steve, thanks.
That's approval of the amendments from the regular meeting on May 6, 2014. Any corrections, discussion items off of that?
I move that we approve the amendments as sent out.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is financial report.
This is Anderson with staff. This is through the end of April, so we're at 83% of the year. Going down through there, we're a little bit higher in some revenue areas, some lower in some revenue areas such as property sales. We're also a little bit lower in planning and zoning salaries because we had some grants that we were able to utilize some funds from. Overall, we're in very good shape, being very close to the 83% mark.
Thanks. Any questions for staff? None. Look for a motion to receive. Place those on the clock.
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
carries. Next is oral presentations. This is for any item that's not on tonight's agenda. For anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to that, please come to the microphone. See none, we'll move on with our agenda items. The first one is an encroachment agreement. This is a request by JSA Development LLC for an encroachment agreement to allow for a stairwell to encroach five feet into the public right-of-way located at 320 through 322 East Fourth Street. Staff report? I gotta find it. They're throwing us out of order. Let me know when you find the page number.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two?
This is Schrader with staff. It's a request for an encroachment agreement to allow for construction of a stairwell within the sidewalk within the right-of-way of West Fourth Street in front of 320 through 322 East Fourth Street to provide access to the basement of the building. Encroachment agreement would allow the stairwell to extend five feet out into the public sidewalk along a 21.3-foot length of street frontage to provide access to the basement at 320 to 322 East Fourth Street, which is occupied by The Cellar, a bar establishment located below the CU, which is a restaurant establishment. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood as the request is encroaching into an area previously approved for an outdoor seating area, and the existing outdoor seating area will be reconfigured. There would still be 12-foot, 11 inches of sidewalk between the stairwell and the curb, although a portion of this will be proposed to be incorporated into a reconfigured outdoor seating area, which goes through a separate approval process. Minimum clearance for pedestrian access on the sidewalk will be maintained. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic and pedestrian conditions in the area. The site and all surrounding areas are Zone C3, which is part of the Central Business District. The building for which the proposed stairwell would be located in was built in 1902. Surrounding properties were developed around that same time period. There are no known public utilities located within the area of the proposed stairwell. The applicant has indicated that there are several private service lines that serve their building in the general area that will need to be worked around. Mid-America Energy has noted that they have a gas and electric in close proximity and will further review the proposed encroachment and report back with any concerns. We have not heard back any additional concerns from them as of yet. Currently, the applicants are redeveloping the historic property at 320 to 322 East Fourth Street and would like to install the new stairwell into the Fourth Street right-of-way to provide additional and more visible entrance to the lower level, which is occupied by The Cellar. The first floor, which is the CU Restaurant, and the second and third floors will be renovated into seven new market-rate apartments, bringing a total investment of the building of over $2.5 million. The encroachment would provide direct access to The Cellar from East Fourth Street, which will improve visibility and hopefully lead to increased customers to both the CU and The Cellar, and would increase the level of activity and vitality of the East Fourth Street corridor. The applicant has noted that there is at least one existing example of a similar stairwell access within the street right-of-way in the downtown, which is at 620 Lafayette Street, which is the Court Square or Beecher Law Office Building, and that historically this was a very common practice in the downtown. Typical encroachment agreements that the City of Waterloo approves include wording noting that the encroachment agreement can be terminated and the encroachment made to be removed, and the applicant would be requesting an encroachment agreement that would not have such a termination clause or a differently worded termination clause. At the technical review committee meeting, concern was expressed for encroachments into the public street right-of-way and concern noted over the precedence that the request could set, leading to other requests for similar encroachments, and it was questioned why the stairwell could not be moved into the building footprint and therefore not encroach into the right-of-way. The applicants have noted that because of the addition of an elevator to serve the remodeled upper floors, interior restaurant space was lost, and they are recapturing as much as possible by pushing the current front wall out to the property line, as it's currently not all the way out to the property line, and would not be able to recapture lost restaurant space if the stairwell was located within the building footprint. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for an encroachment agreement be approved as the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic or pedestrian conditions as sufficient room for pedestrians to utilize the sidewalk will be maintained and subject to a condition that there will be a fully signed and executed encroachment agreement. Any questions for staff?
This is Tack. I had a question. I know the concern about having a precedent to go forward on that, but one of the statements in their answer my question about, has this been done in the past? Would it have, you know, is this something historically has done? Because I know when I spoke with David E. about a couple of years ago, we talked about how they're trying to restore a lot of the buildings back to their original architecture. So I'm wondering, is a downtown part of like historical, any zoning for that? I know there's a couple different types. One has required exact material, some it has to look like material, but I'm just thinking if we allow this so that we don't have everybody wanting to do this, would there be some legal clause in to say because this is a downtown renovation, historical project, is there some way either in zoning or in the legal laws that would prevent anyone just coming forward and saying, I'd like to have this done?
I'm not real sure on that one. I don't know if you've got any thoughts?
This is Anderson with staff. Obviously, you know, this is within the downtown area, so there is a Main Street Design Review Board as well. Main Street Design Review has the authority to say yes or no on these types of requests, project by project, as they see needed. There's also city staff, and, you know, again, needing to go through the encroachment process, we look at these each individually to see if there's room for ADA, you know, room afterwards, what the objectives are for putting in things like this, if they meet our criteria for downtown development. This one seems very positive. It's allowing for better use of the lower levels. It doesn't appear to be bothering any utility work, so we recommend an approval.
Noel, do you know if, this is Hall, if the Main Street Review, Design Review was approached for this design?
This is Schrader with staff. Yes, I sit on the Main Street Design Review, and this design has gone before them and was approved.
Thank you.
This is Morrison. The notes indicate Mid-America was going to report back. Have they?
They have not as of yet. That was basically about a week ago, so I don't know if they need a little bit more time. They know that they have some utilities that are close, they just weren't sure how close. So I think at this point, you know, we're thinking that we can move forward with an encroachment agreement and the developer can work with Mid-America to make sure that their needs are met. I know that Mid-America said that the electric in particular would be, I think he called it a duct bank, I don't know exactly what that is, but extremely difficult and expensive if it had to be moved. So I think they'll have to work within the confines of not interrupting what Mid-America has there.
Okay.
And the developer is here. He can kind of speak to that as well.
With JSA Development on the controller for the phone. Well, this is Jack of all trades, I guess, sometimes, but the, we do have private utilities, and staff report noted that we're going to have to work closely with Mid-America to move anyway, so should there be some other issues or concerns, we can work through those with them. We have, I know we'll be working on relocating the private service into the building for our gas service specifically, not their main for those purposes, but we don't expect that we're going to have anything beyond what we normally deal with in our downtown area, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak to or for or against this encroachment agreement request? If you know, bring it back to the commission for action.
I would move that we approve the encroachment agreement, subject to a fully signed and executed encroachment agreement.
I'll second. This is Mike Young.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, we're moving on to your agenda. Item F was also moved up in
131?
For us commission members, this is page 131. This is an appeal request. Johann and Kelly Carl for appeal to allow for, excuse me, 37 and a half-foot driveway approach, 13 and a half feet more than the maximum allowed, located at 444 Reber Avenue. Staff report?
This is Volker with staff. The applicants are requesting to expand their existing driveway 13 feet, 5 inches more than the maximum allowed of 14 feet. It would appear that the request could have a negative impact on the neighborhood. The extended curb cut could set a precedence for future requests, and the proposed request could have a negative impact on traffic in the area, allowing for a larger curb cut to the existing drive would take away from Mon Street parking. The proposed property, or the property in question is Zoned R2, 1 and 2 Family Residence District, and has been since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1969. The property in question is not located within a special floodplain hazard area. It would appear that no utility relocation would be necessary for this request. The applicant is requesting to expand their existing curb cut to allow for easier access to their new two-stall garage. There is an existing concrete slab in front of this new garage that extends to the home to the south. The applicant has indicated that expanding the curb cut would take away from Mon Street parking. Engineering Department has indicated that they would recommend the curb cut requirements be applied and only allow for the 24-foot curb cut width, and indicated that the applicant would be able to adjust the existing curb cut to allow for better access to their garage just along, just as long as it meets the current standards. Request, therefore, staff recommends that the request to appeal, for an appeal to allow for the 37-foot, 5-inch driveway approach, 13 feet, 5 inches more than the maximum allowed located at 444 Reber Avenue be denied for the following reasons. The request would appear to set a precedence for, to allow for wider driveway approach than allotted for a double garage. The applicant would be able to adjust the current curb cut to allow for sufficient access to the new garage, and there does not appear to be a significant uniqueness to this request. The applicant has submitted or brought along today a petition from adjoining landowners or property owners that support the request, so I will pass this around to the commissioners.
Questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to this appeal request?
So, I'm Kelly Carl, one of the owners, and my husband. So, when we built the garage, we, to meet code, we had to move it 10 feet from the, what is it? Is it 10 feet from the house? To meet code with that because it wasn't attached, but in doing that, we would, then we'd had to move the existing drive, and in doing that, we would also lose, we have a parking pad there, with the possibility of in the future making a carport. So that was one of the reasons why, and our street does get congested, and so a lot of times we are able to park another car on there versus we would lose that, and then it would be more vehicles on the street to lessen, I guess, parking because you can only park on one side. And our neighbors were all in support of it. We didn't find anyone that was against it. In addition, we've seen other properties that have had that extended curb cut as well to accommodate for a car port or the extra parking spot in their driveway.
Any questions for the applicant?
This is Tack. It's some Claire. You're asking for it because I'm looking at the drawing on page 140, and it looks like because of the 10-feet requirement from the house, are you asking that you want to have the driveway more in line so you can drive more straight in?
Yeah, straight in.
I can see that.
Yeah, or even being able to, if we couldn't get the full 13, to get an additional something would be nice, just so we can, we can somewhat angle in. We don't have to have a direct access in. That would be nice, but I think a little bit wider that way. We don't have to lose that parking pad that's existing there.
It looks like that the driveway going up, you've got about maybe a couple of feet for the first part of the garage, and then all the rest is grass. You're asking you want some of that be allowed to go over into that grass area so you can angle it in?
The other proposal we had was to do like a technical, like turnaround driveway. Obviously, our driveway's not big enough to get a turnaround, turnaround, but because we're on a corner lot, I believe, I could be wrong on this, city people, that because we're on a corner lot, we would technically be allowed to have a wraparound in-and-out driveway. So if we could just put in another entry or entrance where that second through the grass, and then we could have a grassy space, have our existing approach a grassy space, and then another approach into the second stall, that would also, and then of course, we would redo the rest of the driveway, so it would, I guess, look nicer aesthetically and hopefully increase property value.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Discussion or action from the commission?
This is Gustafson. So is staff denying this recommendation basically because they don't want to set the precedence, or was it for some other reason, that they saw it as a safety issue?
I'm just going to defer to Eric and Eric over there talking about that. Engineering generally has the rules on the, on what you can have for driveway width, so. Eric, I think you missed a question. If you want to repeat that.
Oh. Were you denying, wanting to deny this because of the fact that you didn't want to set the precedence, or is it because of the fact that you thought there was safety issues or something else with expanding the driveway further than what is normally allowed?
Eric Thorson, city engineer. Obviously, the precedent is one issue, but these are standards that have been in place for a long time, and we adhere to those standards, and that's what we're required to enforce. So this is the process that someone has to go through if they're not agreeing with what we recommend, but we have, there are a few of these driveways around, but some of them are illegal, and some have also been there since before the standards were in place. So we're just very cognizant of those standards and stick with them, and if we're a triple driveway, you can get a wider one. I mean, it's kind of based on the amount of garage stalls that are there, and has to do with access and drainage and snow plowing. There's lots of reasons to minimize the amount of curb cuts.
Eric?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. This is Rankin. Does the driveway have to be where it's at currently, or, I mean, can it be moved down but not?
It can be adjusted.
Okay, so curb could be added?
We're not, we're just talking about the width, the standard widths that are allowed for those types of driveways. It can be shifted.
So you could have your driveway right in front of the garage at 24 feet, have an area to turn up into that parking spot without having a
That's
34, 37-foot wide driveway?
That was our suggestion.
Yeah. Okay. But if I understood, this is Mike Young, if I understood from the applicant, that would take away the existing, that carport area?
Yeah, so I mean, it would be the same issue. I mean, we could
Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry. I mean, it would be the same issue. We'd lose the carport, so then to get into the parking paddles.
You'd have the same.
Yeah. We would be jumping over the curb to do that as well, and then killing the grass and so forth. So, I mean, if it would be possible to, like, put in a second approach into that, and then we'd have, like I said, the grassy space, if I can understand not wanting to let us widen it, but if that would be possible to do that, and in addition with the drainage issues, actually, since we've built the garage, because before, I don't know what it, I guess probably just having the garage there, like, we've had a lot of drainage issues, and I feel that's because it's draining and then it's just hitting the sidewalk and sitting on the sidewalk. In the winter, we have like two inches worth of solid sheet ice to the left of the garage there, and so I feel that also to help with drainage, if we were able to just have that full approach, it would actually drain off into the street and into the gutter and lessen that. I mean, that's a really safety issue. We have a lot of kids on the street, and you can't get rid of two inches of solid ice, so.
This is
Oh, go ahead.
Schrader with staff. Just kind of a non-technical review of the driveway policy. So essentially, if you have a double-stall garage, you can have a double-width curb approach, and then if you want to have a kind of third parking stall off to the side of that, you can widen out your driveway once you're outside of the right-of-way, but what the applicant is, you know, essentially pointing out in this situation is because that garage is, I think it's 10 feet back from the right-of-way, you know, with that 10-foot gap, that doesn't give you a lot of space to enter into, you know, a driveway that would be lined up with the garage, and then be able to within that 10-foot space, angle over to get into that stall to the side. So they're saying if you, if they moved it, kept it a double width and moved it over, it's going to limit use of that third stall. If they keep it where it is, it's already limiting use of the western stall. So, I mean, I do understand what they're saying. It's just bumping up against a city-adopted policy on the driveway requirements.
Now, the homeowner did mention, suggest a second option, which was that second entry. Could you maybe speak to what the likelihood, I guess, of the acceptance of that would be?
Eric Thorson, Jake. If you have over 100 feet of frontage, you have the potential to maybe have two driveways. I'm not sure how that would help in this situation, really. I'm not really seeing, I guess, what, or maybe not clear on what they're trying to accomplish with that. You know, a little tiny space in between probably isn't going to be significant.
Okay.
You know, so.
So if they, sorry, so if they did apply for that second entry, would it more likely than not be approved or suggested to approve?
Well, we'd have to look, yeah, we'd have to look. This is the first I've heard of that.
Sure, okay.
So we'd have to look at that and see what that entailed, but probably leaving a couple little feet of curb is really not too significant.
Okay.
And this is Mike Young. That's the issue I'm in here is, I'm sympathetic to the homeowners. They're, I mean, it looks like a nice garage, and it might actually look better just aesthetically if there was the approach, and certainly functionally would be better. I mean, it seems like a very legitimate appeal for them to be here. If there was a technical reason not to do it, that's one thing, but if it's just the precedent concern on this, that's where I, it's a much tougher decision because generally I think, well, the homeowner there, it's going to be probably easier and safer to pull in and out. Is there any middle ground that can be found here rather than just saying no?
Well, the technical part of it is it wouldn't meet the standards, so there's definitely a technical issue.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, there's pluses and minuses here probably, and that's why you go to the appeal process, and so we're bound, I mean
Okay, fair enough.
To uphold the codes and standards of the city. That's what we
Yeah.
Are required to do. We don't have the leeway to adjust those.
Gotcha, okay.
This is Whitehead. One more question, Eric, sorry. I was just reading the analysis here. We just adopted these standards, 2004?
No, they've been in place quite a while. We update them periodically as, as things come up. For instance, recently, we just updated and changed some mastic materials that's used for expansion joints and things. There's some new products out on the market, and some contractors had requested to use those, so we did an update on that, and there's some new ADA standards out there that we had to make some adjustments for on where handicap ramps need to be and stuff. This particular standard has been in place for quite a while.
Okay.
This particular part of the standards, I mean.
That reads different.
This is Morrison. The garage was built in 2012. I'm assuming they had a permit, and so was there any parameter set related to the driveway when the garage was approved? Were they given any conditions?
We don't, I don't know, we don't typically review just garage permits, so that wouldn't have come through engineering, but the standards would have been the same. I mean, it hasn't changed that recently. It's been in place for probably at least several decades.
This is Tack. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Lynn.
On the drainage, because I have a daughter that lives nearby with her family, and I sympathize because I've had a walk on that two-inch thick of ice in the winter, and I actually had to crawl because it was, it was very slick for about a whole block. So I don't know if that's something that, when they look at this and finishing up, is that something that the city department can kind of work with them on that? Because it is pretty slick over in that neighborhood. I've noticed that.
I mean, people fall, and it's not safe.
Yeah, because it goes all the way to even like the stairs in some of those homes, because they go up a couple stairs, and then the whole entire sidewalk is, yeah, I understand. It's at least two to three inches thick.
This is Gustafson. I guess my question is, is that the homeowners had to place the garage 10 feet away from their current house. garage 10 feet away from their current house. It's not their fault that that's what's mandated by the city code. Now, they don't have access to the garage that they just invested all this money into. And it seems ridiculous for us to deny them the opportunity to have full use and access to a building that they have put on their own property. So I'm really struggling with this. I understand what Eric is saying, that we have codes and ordinances put in place. But on the other hand, if this is something that's been on the books for a long time, was it more appropriate for single-star stall garages? Was it more appropriate for when people only needed a one-stall garage or a stall and a half? People are, need more, they have more stuff, so they need more room.
Any other comments? Anybody want to take any action?
I would move that we approve the application as filed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the appeal request. Any further discussion? See none, we'll do a real call vote. Tackett? So a vote of yes would be that you are voting to approve their appeal to be able to expand it?
Yes.
Rankin?
No.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Passes. That request passes? Does that go on to?
So this is a recommendation. It'll be forwarded to the city council. Probably in two weeks. Not this next Monday, but the Monday after.
Would that be something that would be helpful for us to?
Yes.
Cover that then, too?
The council will have the final say. So this is a recommendation to them. So the council approval or denial would be the final action on it.
And then would we get notice of that?
We can definitely get you some notice, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Move back up to item A1 of our agenda. Page 15, back at the beginning for us. And the time is now 4:30. And a hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by Robson Homes, Inc. to rezone 6.47 acres from R3 Multiple Residence District to R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District to allow for the construction of new multifamily dwelling units generally located east of Morning Dove Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, drawings, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 22, 2014." Do we have a motion to receive and place this on file?
So moved, Gustafson.
And I'll second. Mike Young?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. The motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphones. Staff report?
This is Volker with staff. The request to rezone 6.47 acres from R3 Multiple Residence District to R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District would allow for the construction of new multifamily dwelling units within the primary growth area of Waterloo. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area and the requested lots would extend residential development in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions. Extension of existing streets and utilities would allow for further development within the 6.47 acres in question. The site has been zoned R3 Multiple Family Residence District since October 6 of 1980. The area in question is not located within the floodplain. The R3 RP Planned Residence District is intended to, and designed to provide a means for the development of tracts of land on a unit base allowing greater flexibility and diversification of land uses and building locations than the conventional single-lot method. Permitted uses within the R3 RP District would be single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. The area in question consists of 6.47 acres and would be an extension of the R3 RP District from the west to allow for further residential development. The property in question is designated as mixed commercial and high-density residential on the future land use map. The applicant has submitted a site plan and preliminary plat that would allow for 148 residential units on seven lots in the area in question, which includes an additional area that is, that is included in the rezone request. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for rezone of 6.47 acres from R3 Multiple Residence District to R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District be approved for the following reasons. The site in question would appear to provide sufficient space to meet all requirements, regulations, including setbacks, drainage, landscape, screening, et cetera. And the rezone is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classify this area as mixed commercial and high-density residential. The site plan will create additional infill and development site in the primary growth area.
Any questions for staff?
And Adrian, this is the new, this one that was handed out to them is the current one that meets the technical review?
Correct. That would be the new site plan that was submitted Friday, I believe.
Just for the commission to clarify that, this larger one that was handed out to you before the meeting should meet all the things that were brought up in the technical review committee meeting on this, from the one in your packet?
And this is, this is Mike Young. Just a question, I'm not opposed to this, but just curious. On the, the access, it looks like it, everything right now is on, is it Serra Drive? But potentially, could this be, could it go farther around to the east, I guess, and connect with, I know there are a number of commercial buildings that are like Best Buy and all that, that are just to the north there? There's not another, a second access into here? Well, I'm sorry, there is one to the west, right, by, like Home Depot?
Yeah, I think the best page to look at is probably page 18, has the aerial photo of the area to be rezoned in here.
Yeah.
And I would agree with you, Mike. I mean, moving ahead, probably not with this request, but moving ahead, we'll be looking at if there's a potential way to make a connection kind of to that upper right-hand corner. You can see Crossroads Boulevard there on page 18.
So you'd have three in and out?
And then eventually, of course, it'll, it'll connect to the east. There's a, there's a point. Again, on page 18, if you look kind of to the right here, there's a drainage way. At that point, the drainage pretty much starts to go to the east. So if they were to keep developing that way, they'd have to get sewer to the east to be able to serve it without putting in a lift station. If they were putting a sewer to the east, I'd expect a road connection may follow at that point, then too. And then you've got multiple entrances as, as you're talking about.
Gotcha, okay. Oh, okay, by the Home Depot area. Okay, gotcha. Okay. And again, I'm not opposed to it, just curious.
This is Gustafson. I don't know if my mind is in the right place or not, but seems like in February, we talked about this request. And we had people that lived in this area that were opposed to having two-story buildings built because everything out there right now is basically one-story, whether it's a duplex or a single-family home. And they were very concerned about how having big, giant, two-story buildings were going to impact their quality of life. Does anybody else remember that conversation?
I don't remember, I don't remember if it was February.
Okay.
But a little while back, again, I'd say on page 18, it shows it the best. On Morning Dove Drive there, kind of that easterlymost road, and looking at, I forget what the name of the one is in the middle there.
Mockingbird.
Mockingbird. You can see in this aerial photo, there wasn't a lot being built out there. There's a, there's kind of a mixture of some single-family homes being built on Mockingbird, kind of on both sides of that. Then on Morning Dove there, Robson Homes came in and they were proposing to build duplexes on the west side of the road and fourplexes on the east side of the road. The planning commission, I believe, recommended denial because of opposition from the neighbors about additional traffic, about changing it from primarily single-family to duplexes. There's actually some other condo developments in here, so there's a mixture of single-family and two-family, but the council ended up denying it as well. Right now, Robson is building duplexes along Morning Dove on both the west and the east sides. As they continue to move to the east, they are proposing to get a little bit more dense. It's currently zoned R3, so it allows for that. And I can't speak directly for the applicants. Our conversations with them, they've looked at, they've created kind of that buffer and transitional from the single-family to the duplexes to now that they're going to a three and fourplex, sixplex design.
But I think your recollection is correct. I just don't know when it was. I think Eric Johnson was here for the, he came and spoke to us and opposed it, I think representing the owners, Moren Hummingbird, I think it was, and then Robson. But yeah, I think that was, well, yeah, you captured.
I'd say if you drove out there, there, there is a dip in the land from Morning Dove to where some of these newer ones are going to go in the topography out there. So it won't be as visible for the two-story, but I don't know if anyone's here to oppose it today.
I just want to be consistent about, you know, making decisions that are going to impact people's lives. And I just wondered if we had heard anything from people that lived out there. Is there anyone here?
Anybody like to speak for or against the, this is for the rezone request. I believe the next, I should have done these together, but the next one will be actually for the site plan amendment. Anybody for the rezone request? See none, look for a motion to close a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Further discussion from the commission?
Well, hearing none, I'll put a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
This is Schrader with staff. Since there wasn't a motion, I was just going to kind of elaborate in case, you know, individuals are still concerned about that development scheme. It, it was quite some time back when that request went through. I don't remember. It's been more than a year ago. But I don't think Mr. Johnson was speaking in opposition of it because he was representing the sellers of the land that Mr. Robson was buying from. And Skogman Homes was opposed, but they were only opposed to more-than duplexes on the west side of that far east road. And even though they weren't opposed to fourplexes on the far east side, it did end up getting denied outright so that only duplexes can go in that entire subdivision. But now this is to the east of that yet. So it does create that good transition of two rows of duplexes and then now moving into fourplexes and stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will make a motion that we approve. This is just for the site plan amendment.
Rezone request?
I'm sorry, for the rezone, excuse me. I'm trying to think. There was no condition with that, was there? I just was looking in the wrong place. No, just approve the rezone.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the rezone request. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion carries. Next is a, another request by Robson Homes. Time is now 4:43. And a hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by Robson Homes, Inc. for a site plan amendment in the R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District to allow for the construction of 148 new dwelling units generally located on 20.63 acres of land located east of Morning Dove Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photographs, drawings, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 22, 2014." Do we have a motion to receive and place this on file?
Also move. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address. The members, the members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone.
This is Volker with staff. The request by Robson Homes, Inc. for a site plan amendment to the R3 RP Planned Residence, Multiple Residence District to allow for the construction of 148 new dwelling units. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions. Vehicles would access the lots by an extension of Morning Dove Drive and also from streets labeled Darby Drive, Grindstone Circle, and Omaha Avenue. Said streets are to be developed and later on dedicated to the city for public street use. All roads are classified as local streets. The area in question is not located within a floodplain. And the site plan shows a 10-foot utility easement along the front of all seven lots and an eight-inch sanitary sewer connection off of Morning Dove Drive running through the center of each prospective street. Storm sewer and water sewer main lines are shown within the proposed streets as well. There is a 20-foot drainage easement located within the center of Lot 1 and 15-foot drainage easement located between Lots 15, or Lots 5 and 6, 3 and 4, and along the rear lot of 7, and also along the rear lot of 2. Tract A is located in the northeast corner of the plat and contains a total of .94 acres. Gas and storm sewer lines are shown within the utility easements throughout, throughout the southerly and westerly portions of proposed streets. Easement shown on the Prairie Meadows Estates preliminary plat appears to be consistent with the easements in the adjoining subdivisions to the west. The site, the updated site plan shows a total of 35 buildings, which would consist of three to six units each and are shown with an attached garage for each unit. The applicant has indicated that that construction would take place in two phases. The first phase would, would consist of 76 units and construction of phase one would begin in the fall of 2014. Phase two would consist of 72 units. The parking regulations prohibit the proposed driveway configurations, which would require vehicles to back out onto public streets. The RP regulation, regulations state that the parking requirements shall apply except that the city council may, after recommendation from the planning commission, alter those requirements to preserve the intent and purpose of the ordinance. Staff does have some concern with the driveway layout. Will leave very little room for on-street parking. Staff is, has been considering an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for this type of driveway configuration for multifamily, built-in road development style with individual driveways and garages to each unit. Because of the flexibility of parking requirements to properties owned RP, the request can proceed prior to adoption of the amendment, but additional discussion may be needed regarding adequate parking being provided for the development. A stormwater detention area is shown in the northeast corner of the site plan and the storm sewer lines are shown connecting, connected from existing lines on Morning Dove Drive extending throughout the front of all seven lots. Staff would note that this site plan does not specify how large the storm sewer lines will be, but does show placement of them within the area developed. Gas, water, and storm sewer lines are shown within the utility easements throughout the southerly and westerly portions of proposed streets. An eight-inch sanitary sewer line is shown down the center of every proposed street. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the site plan amendment in the R3 RP Planned Resident, Multiple Residence District allow the construction of 148 new dwelling units be approved for the following reasons. The site plan is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classify this area as residential. The site plan will create an additional infill development site in, within the primary growth area and subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Any questions for staff?
This is Tackett. Are they going to keep that name, California Chrome Way?
They have changed it. I believe on the new site plan, it would be...
Silver Chrome.
It would be...
Silver Chrome Screen.
Grindstone Circle, it looks like.
Silver Charm. Any other questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request? None, look for a motion to close public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Discussion action.
This is Mike Young. I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan amendment, subject to the condition that the final site plan meet all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, and so on.
Seconded. Morrison?
Moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment request, subject to one staff condition. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. That motion carries. Next is a rezone request, and the time is now 4:50 PM. A hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by Brent Dollstrom to rezone 2.3 acres from R2 1 and 2 family residence district and R3 RP Plan Multiple Residence District to R2 RP Plan 1 and 2 family residence district to allow for the construction of five new twin home dwellings located southeast of 5609 Summerland Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, drawings, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 22, 2014." We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report.
This is Andero with staff. The request to rezone the area to R2 RP 1 and 2 family planned residence district would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding neighborhood. The surrounding neighborhood is comprised of single-family and two-family dwellings, and the proposed duplexes would appear to fit the character of the existing development in the area. Surrounding land uses include, to the north, 1 and 2 family residence zone R3 RP Plan Multiple Residence District; to the south, single-family development zone R2 1 and 2 family residence district; to the east is a mobile home park zone R3 Multiple Residence District; and to the west, 1 and 2 family residence zone R3 RP Plan Multiple Family Residence District. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 2.38 acres of land from R2 1 and 2 family residence district and R3 RP Planned Residence District to R2 RP Planned 1 and 2 Family Residence District. The R2 designation would allow for the development of 1 and 2 family dwellings. Due to previous concerns from surrounding neighborhoods before the land in question was rezoned in 2003, staff at that time felt rezoning some of the land abutting the existing subdivision to the south of the proposed rezone area, as R2 would provide a buffer from the existing houses to the south and from any multifamily development that could occur in land zone R3 RP. With the applicant requesting the R2 RP Planned Residence District, due to the R2 designation, no multifamily, which means three or more units, can occur in the zoning district. Also, the RP designation allows for any proposed development, if deemed a major amendment, to go through a public review process, which would be through the planning commission and city council. This provides opportunity for those with questions or concerns to a site plan amendment request to be able to proceed a proposed development, its layouts, proposed buildings, materials, et cetera. Staff recommends that the request to rezone 2.38 acres from R2 and R3 RP to R2 RP be approved for the following reasons. The request is located within the primary growth area corner of the City Waterloo Comprehensive Plan. It can be serviced by the extension of existing utilities in the area. The requested rezoning classification would appear to be compatible with already existing zoning in the area, and the request to rezone the property to R2 RP would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, as it would only allow for 1 and 2 family development, which would be in character with the already existing development in the area.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the rezone request?
My name is Karen Stube. I'm a resident of Summerland Park subdivision. I own a property at 5618 Summerland Drive. I have several documents that, when I want to give copies, so I just hand them to you. So Brent Dollstrom's proposed construction of five duplexes that would be off the private street extension from Dyset Road southeast of 5609 Summerland Drive should be denied for the following reasons. Our subdivision is to be drained by a rural ditch system and a sanitary sewer easement, and it does not have any storm sewer system. Owners per our deed of dedication, owners of each lot shall at all times comply with the regulations of the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and other governmental agencies with respect to soil erosion, as they may now exist or may be amended in the future. The current developer of the subdivisions, complete failure to comply with these restrictions as well as establishing and maintaining the roadside ditch rural drainage system on all unsold lots and the sanitary sewer system as part of the block grant project he was awarded, and the city's lack of oversight under that grant project has created a significant problem with water drainage and flooding within the subdivision. We have photos of all of the water flooding problems that we have, and then this is where the sanitary sewer easement is supposed to be, and you will see in all the photos that that melon is in. And it is also blocked.
Is he up there?
Can they pass him around? No. So I know this works. The rural drainage system and sanitary easement, see the Shenek Engineering Company document. That's the one that I just passed out. That was the engineering company that basically determined what was going to need to be in the subdivision for that lot of land. Must be reestablished and repaired before the subdivision can take on any additional water runoff from any proposed projects. Single-family homes with a lot more grass space is going to create less water. The five duplexes with all of the hardscape, and there's going to be a turnaround at the end, so we are going to be taking on a lot more water than what we already have. Also, since this is a private subdivision, full disclosure to the homeowners regarding, number one, will this project be incorporated into our existing subdivision by the current developer? The current developer of the subdivision has the right to add to the subdivision. The City of Waterloo has stated that a new road will be required to connect this project to the subdivision. We would like to know who will be responsible for the costs associated with putting the road in. We want to also know who will be responsible for the ongoing maintenance of the road, since this is a private subdivision. Since Summerland Park is a private subdivision and the city does not support the subdivision in any way with maintenance of the subdivision, including streets, if these costs are going to be added to the current homeowners, the current homeowners do not want this added additional financial burden. We oppose being given the additional burden and would propose that the City of Waterloo annex the street before approving this plan to remove any additional financial burden that would be added to the Summerland Park homeowners. And the last piece that I have to it is, there is a petition, and it states that the below-listed residents of Summerland Park, Summerland Farms subdivision oppose a request by Brent Dollstrom to allow for construction of five new twin home dwellings located southeast of 5609 Summerland Drive. We oppose this request for the following reasons. One, storm drain collection system that was to be addressed and corrected by Jason Guthrie when he was granted the block grant project in 2009, was never addressed, and there has been further substantial erosion and deterioration of the system, so the subdivision currently has significant water problems, and as you can see, the photos are going around. There must be a comprehensive study done on the excessive water runoff that any redevelopment or new development will have on the already existing problem. This study should be done by an independent contractor that is not associated with the city because of the conflict of interest, and if that study would fall on the homeowner's responsibility to get together, then we would need much more time in order to be able to identify an independent contractor. Look at that. City of engineering policies are to comprehensively manage and reduce the potential for stormwater runoff pollution in a manner for the purpose of promoting health, safety, and general welfare of the population and for the protection of the property. It also includes the intention to maintain the stormwater drainage system. And this has been signed by approximately 46 residents of Summerland Farms.
Forty-six out of how many residents?
There's 57.
Fifty, 57 or 58. Thank you.
I'm sorry, was I supposed to say for questions?
If you would.
If you would, please.
And I'm just, I'm speaking for myself. I'm not representing anybody here. Everybody here can kind of answer for themselves.
So I guess my question is, what legal standing do you have as homeowners to try to rectify the problems that you're currently facing? And what have you done to try and rectify it?
Well, we recently have, you know, gotten together. We've hired an attorney. You know, we're in the process of all of that. We're looking at what we would have to do in order to get the homeowners association, which is dissolved. The homeowners association is dissolved because Jason Guthrie did not pay taxes on the property, and he did not file the yearly filings. Jason, for several years, would not turn over the development to us. You know, it was owned by Iowa Development for, under the grant project, and that's because he was able to maintain complete control on the subdivision.
So what is your current legal standing as far as making efforts to make the developer mitigate the problems that are going on in your development?
Well, we've been trying to work with the city. I mean, right now, we've got the entire subdivision that hasn't been mowed since the beginning of the year. We call the city for violation of the city ordinance. It still hasn't been mowed. It's over three feet, so we try and work with the city. In addition, we've formed a committee for us to look at our options for what we have to do to get the homeowners association established. So that's how we found out that there are back taxes that are due. That's how we found out that there are annual reports that are missing. So we're in the process of working towards all of those things, as well as the attorney that we've retained to, you know, kind of guide us and give us some recommendations on how we can legally go about doing that.
So if you have a private organization, this is not a subdivision of the City of Waterloo, correct?
It's a subdivision of the city. It consists of private streets.
Okay. So, but if they, are they required to do the same upkeep and maintenance of their property as any other city ordinance, or a subdivision would need to?
Eric Schrader, city planner. I assume the answer to that would be yes, such as like the weed control, for example. The code enforcement office has been working with them, and it's my understanding that a city-hired contractor has been given notice to proceed to cut the weeds down and assess the costs. I don't have all of the details on that, but I guess I know that the residents have been working with the city, and it has been a little bit of a slow process. But as for other codes, I mean, the drainage issue and issues like that are really a private matter that the city would not get involved with.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know is, is that what were the limitations that the city is functioning under?
This is Tackett. I have a question. Looking at that, so basically what you're saying is, would you be in favor of it had there been a history of responsible care and maintenance of what was done in the past? Is that basically what you're saying, or is it just?
Yeah. And again, I'm not going to speak for every single solitary person behind me because they all will come up here and speak about their feelings on it. I think that what was, the petition basically says what the petition says. What I talked about was that I am opposed to it at this point in time when our subdivision cannot take on any additional water. There are, the rural drainage ditch system in front of every single solitary house is not established. None of the empty lots have it. So like if you look at my lot. So if you look at my lot, I have got a ripped raft rural drainage system. I'm basically down towards the bottom of the hill, and there's only one empty lot next to me before it's supposed to go into that sanitary sewer easement and be carried out to the back of the subdivision and out towards the aisle. As you can see, here's mine that's ripped raft, and that's what it runs into, and it has absolutely nowhere to go. And then that's what ends up happening. So what I'm saying is that I'm opposed to any type of project going up on a hill because we already take water from the subdivision that's behind us existing, and I'm opposed to putting another project up on top of the hill, and especially a project that has all of that hardscape. Whereas if they were single-family homes that had lots of grass, same way all of ours do, you know, the grass could absorb a lot of that water, but this is a ton of hardscape. Plus, now not a 12-foot road, but a 20-foot road that's going to come straight down into our subdivision, what I'm saying is, I don't see how responsibly or reasonably that can be approved when we're already letting the city know that we have a significant water problem. And there are homeowners that, whose basements get flooded, who went, before all of this happened with Jason, before all of the additional development, and I believe that some of you sat here when the grant project came in, part of the agreement to that was that all of those issues were going to be addressed when he was bringing in the new houses, and they never ever were. So now we even have new homeowners who have had houses filled who have flooding in their basement.
So I think I understand what you're saying. It sounds like we need to take care of what has been happening before we consider anything else, and if we do, we need to make sure that what has happened in the past doesn't happen again and put things correct. Is that a pretty good summary? Okay. That makes sense. That's fair.
I always believe that city engineering would need to basically do a study and say how much water is going to be produced from this project. Looking at the subdivision and looking at what we have right now, you know, that the 50-foot, there's a 50-foot sanitary sewer easement that is supposed to go through the entire center of the entire subdivision. That does not exist. It doesn't exist.
Are you saying, sorry, this is Whitehead, a sanitary or a storm?
Sanitary sewer easement.
Okay. So the yellow?
That's what the yellow highlighted, right. And it's 50 foot, sanitary drainage, and it's 50 foot. It's supposed to be 50 foot wide.
So the sanitary line is not there, is what you're saying? The sanitary sewer line? The easement's there, but you're saying the sanitary sewer line isn't there?
It's more drainage.
She's saying it doesn't properly.
It doesn't drain.
So it's storm rather than sanitary?
It's bull.
Yeah, okay. I guess I have one question for staff. There's been many references to the block grant. What recourse, if any, does the city have against the developer for not fulfilling his end of the application?
This is Anderson with staff. I don't know. I'd have to check if there was conditions on the block grant that dealt with what she noted about some overall improvements or something like that. Obviously, each home had to be built to Obviously, each home had to be built according to city standards for each home lot. In terms of if they did not fulfill the number of homes that they were supposed to build for the block grant project, I don't think there's any recourse there. They just don't get all the funds for it, for each house they don't build, so.
This is Mike Young. Is the applicant here or anybody from Iowa Development or Jason Guthrie?
Kyle, Helen's back there.
I'm Kyle Helen. My name is Jason here representing Brent. I, I address anything she has afterwards if she wants to finish, or do you want me to answer this question now, or?
Well, no. Some of what I was looking at, and this issue has come up before, I think a couple months ago, was that the meeting in March? Maybe we went through this as well. And there were the issues, it sounded like a lot of the frustration went to Jason Guthrie or Iowa Development Enterprise in completing the, basically water improvements mostly, in that the homeowners' association hadn't been set up, those sorts of things. And so, it sounded like we needed to hear from Jason Guthrie. He still owns the land, right? Brent, has Brent?
I believe Brent's acquired property, two of them, from what I have.
Okay. Do we know what's going on with the common areas, with the?
The common areas, I, I'm unaware of if Brent has acquired those or if Jason still owns those.
Okay.
I guess our recommendation to Brent was not to get the common areas. That's not really, should be his issue to address those with the homeowners. The one thing here is, this is not part of the Summerland development. This was a, an unplanted area that was left out of the subdivision. The only one thing that we're requesting, and we're doing it based on city staff recommendations, is Track B. You can see where we've proposed a 20-foot lane. We're kind of addressing that as a fire lane. Fire department has requested that a second access be made available to the Summerland, the two additions there. So, that we had proposed to, to make that the second access. We would prefer to have a cul-de-sac off of Dyzer Road with twin homes surrounding that, but we've tried to make it through street just to satisfy fire department regulations.
This is Tackett. I have a question, just to make sure I'm getting all my facts correct. Does Brent now, or has he acquired the land that these residents are in? Does he own all that now?
I, I believe he's acquired some of the lots. He has not, as far as I know, acquired the, the common areas, which I think are the two large retention basins. But he has acquired some of the lots, and he planned to develop those with the single, single-family homes and, and possibly something else that's coming up on the agenda later on is, is a couple of 12-plexes.
Yeah. I get, my, the reason why I ask that is, it seems that, and I think we may have talked to, you know, off the record before, that we have private streets that have to fit city code, but because they're privately owned, it's the owner's responsibility to see that these things are taken care of. And I feel like it's wonderful if we can acquire and build and provide housing for people, but I feel the responsibility that comes with that also is pretty heavy. And it seems like these residents now are stuck with who's going to take care of this. And so, I'm wondering who's owning that, who's going to take care of the mess? Because from my perspective, we need to take care of business now, that this, this is what is going on, and before we look at anything further, we need to take care of the mess that already exists and see if we can prevent this from happening. So, I'm just wondering, who owns that, and are they going to take care of that before they move forward in any other?
I don't know.
Is it the same owner? Is it different people?
I don't know if city staff could address that, who technically owns the private street. I don't know if that's the homeowners' association responsibility, or, or she was indicating that it has not been turned over.
Which street is it?
All, all the, all the, all the private streets in the, in both additions.
This is Schrader with staff. The county records still listed as Iowa Development Partners.
Okay. So, yeah, so Brent would not have ownership other than he has a right of usage, just like all the other residents in there, and he had planned to use that to, to facilitate and to construct new single-family homes in that addition. You know, I guess it's a situation where the, the private streets were designed with an open ditch storm sewer system. Unfortunately, as development has gone on, some of the residents had filled in the ditches and put in pipe, so they don't have such a dramatic ditch in the front of their yard. And I think that's kind of probably facilitated some of the stormwater issues. But again, being a private street, that doesn't necessarily fall under the requirements that city staff has to mitigate and follow and enforce those requirements. So, it's kind of a gray area, is where do the homeowners' association step in, and where does Iowa Development step in?
Kyle, if I can kind of get back onto the site in question.
Yeah.
I'm just looking ahead to our next agenda item. We're kind of blending these together. The main issue that's been brought up has been stormwater, and I'm looking at your site plan, and I know this is just a preliminary layout.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't, there really isn't any indication of onsite detention?
That's the one thing that during the tech meeting, city engineering staff had requested that we address stormwater. The one thing here is, we would like to have a site, site plan approved, so we know the position of the buildings, and then we're going to come back to city engineering and submit a stormwater plan that retains that water. So, post-runoff and pre-runoff is, is the same, so we don't have, so we're not technically dumping more storm.
You're looking to keep it onsite.
Yeah. Yeah. Will we retain it onsite as required by city engineering?
Thank you.
This is Schrader with staff. I just wanted to comment on the 20-foot access road across Track B as well. This development with the, the five twin homes with primary access off of Dyzer Road, this development is not what is necessitating that 20-foot access drive. This standalone could develop with, without that. It's the rest of the Summerland Farms, Summerland Park subdivision, which only has one access road in and out, and the fire code now limits the number of units that can be off of a single access road when they don't have sprinkler systems to 30. The development is already well over that, but it was developed as such before that code was put into place. But to be able to continue developing in that subdivision, a secondary access road would be required, this was the most logical location where they could easily provide a secondary access road. So, it's not this five twin homes that are necessitating that. It's so that any additional development can occur in the rest of the subdivision. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
I wanted to get a little clarification on what this gentleman said about Brent purchasing lots. So, I, there's a couple of questions. Is Brent, has Brent purchased the developer rights, and now he's the developer? Because talking about purchasing the green space, Brent cannot purchase the green space. The green space is owned commonly by all the homeowners. So, the green space is not up for sale.
I think what, what Mr. Helen was speaking to is all the other vacant lots within the development. I believe that's what.
Sure. Well, he said lots and green space, and he referred to the two ponds. And let's, I just want to be very clear here.
I understood it as the green space in the middle, where one pond is and the pond over here, and the roads were not purchased, but other vacant lots were. So, he's planning to build spec homes or whatever it may be on those lots.
Right. And that's fine, but what he was saying was the green space being purchased. And Brent Dahlestrom or Jason Guthrie or anyone does not have a right to sell that green space. That green space is owned by all the homeowners.
The middle, the middle portion?
The middle portion, the back portion, Track C, Track B, that is all commonly owned by the homeowners. And I have the deed of dedication for Summerland Park, and I mean, one of the things that planning and zoning also is supposed to be taken into consideration is the deed of dedication for that private subdivision. When any of these types of decisions are being made or approval is being made, that deed of dedication is basically what we were promised as homeowners, what, when we made the major investments that we made within the subdivision, and to protect us in a private subdivision, as it's staying true to what we purchased into.
Any other questions for?
I'm Carla Brown. I'm too short for that microphone, apparently. I live at 5565 Summerland Drive, which is Lot 18. I'm on the side of the twin home that the road will go right next to. And the part that we're discussing tonight sits above us. So, when I'm in my living room, I have a six-foot fence at the back of my lot, but I can still see this area sitting up on top of that. We already have such a water problem that if we get any rain at all, the whole back of our yard, just from that runoff already, fills with ponds, and it takes several days for the ponds to go away. So, if any of that becomes now hardscape or whatever you call it, it's going to be a disaster. We are going to be taking on even more water, and I hadn't even thought about it coming right down that road and into our backyard. So, that's one thing that's kind of hard to visualize, is the part that he has purchased, Brent, that sits, that we're discussing, it sits above several of us there. And so, again, we already have problems with water, and we don't need any more until that's taken care of. I mean, if, I don't know enough about his plan, if he's planning to take that hill down, and that might change things. But right now, whoever would be living in that first twin home up there would be able to look down into my living room despite my six-foot fence, so.
Real quick, a comment on the water, and I kind of asked Mr. Helen this before. They're looking to keep their stormwater onsite to the same equal that it is now. So, there might be some coming down, and Kyle, if you want to address it, feel free. But it's my understanding from my question before that they're looking to keep their stormwater onsite.
I don't think that's going to happen with my.
Yeah. Based on what, what's usually required by city engineering staff is, we're going to have to come back with a stormwater retention plan. So, any, any impervious area of runoff, we're going to have to catch, retain, and release at, at a rate that is not exceeding what was originally there. So, I'd, I'd like to think that anything we do in the process of developing this property, we're going to reduce the amount of runoff and control the amount of runoff, so we can somehow address, not necessarily totally eliminate everything. Again, this is, as she stated, this is on the top of the hill. Everybody knows, water runs downhill. But if we can kind of control that water and release it at a, at a more controlled rate, then I think maybe we can satisfy some of them to some point. Unfortunately, if, if her house is much lower than the property, we haven't gotten into the engineering side of it, is if, you know, we're cutting the hill down substantially or something like that, but we will control all the stormwater onsite. Thank you.
And that's, that's good. I'm really not really opposed to the rezoning, to the R2 RP, you know, or, or the duplexes. Really, our concern is the water. And he says, yeah, we'll take care of it later. Well, we heard that before. Let's approve this, and once we approve this, we're going to take care of this. As you pointed out, I would like to have some assurance now that it's not going to happen later. So, we would like to see a plan now, if possible, before this is approved. They will be retained. They will be stored. They will be released in proper quantity, so it doesn't, you know, flood anymore, you know, as you saw the pictures. It does get pretty bad. And I am on that side, too. It's about 10 to 15 feet up, and when it starts coming down, when we get heavy rain, it does stay there in the backyard and front yard. It, it does go everywhere. And as far, you know, just going to piggyback on a couple other things, on page 62, what I was looking at, you know, as far as who owns the property, right now, it's checked under other, with contract to purchase if approved. So, I believe this goes through, that he would go then through and purchase it, but right now, it's under Iowa Development Enterprises. And the thing with the homeowners' association is, when Iowa Development Enterprises took over, there was, in our deed of dedication, there was a section that said, you know, the developer will transfer the rights to the association when, I don't know, two-thirds of the lots are sold or such-and-such date in 2006. And then it happened. They set one up, but it was dissolved. And ever since then, it, it has been dissolved, and we were unable to get it reestablished. And so, we basically have no say in our own neighborhood, like what's, what's going on. And this is why we're here. Once again, I'm just speaking for myself, and if there's others people here, before any of this goes through, we'd just like to have assurance. Instead of like, yes, we will come back with a plan later to address the water, we would like to hear it now.
Could you name and address, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, Silicon Gulub. I'm at 5535 Summerland Drive. First time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the rezon request?
Yes. I'd like to go back to that gentleman's statement that, you know, once the project is approved, there's some type of plan that's submitted to engineering to make sure that the water for that project is captured and, you know, isn't going to be coming into our development. So, I guess my question to the city is, is wasn't that same type of plan having to be presented to you from Jason Guthrie to take care of the water in the subdivision as it currently is now? And if there was a plan that was submitted to the city and approved to make sure that we, as homeowners, wouldn't end up with what we have, then where is the city's oversight to make sure that Jason is doing that? Because obviously, there's been some type of major failure somewhere, because this is what we have right now. So, you can see that there's an engineering drawing that shows what's supposed to be in the subdivision. I know that, you know, again, something had to be submitted to engineering to be approved. That does not exist. So, where's the oversight to that? Where's the city's responsibility in making sure that Jason Guthrie, as the developer, maintain that?
Eric, did you want to address that or?
Eric Thorson, senior. I think the, the problem here is that engineering has never been really very supportive of these private type of developments, and we've made that known before. They can tend to work on a small area with one developer. I think the issue here is there have been multiple developers, multiple owners, and it's kind of gotten a little messed up. And we don't really have any jurisdiction on the private side. There's no public right of ways or anything here, and that makes it hard for us to go in and force things. Some of the staff has been out, tried to work with some of the developers, make suggestions, and they've had very limited success. It hasn't been real great. So, you know, we try, but we don't really have a lot to fall back on to force these people to do anything, so, you know, we do the best we can with trying to make people work together and, and solve issues, but it just isn't much for us to fall back on when it's all private.
And Eric, this isn't, this isn't proposed as a private subdivision, so we will have a little bit more teeth if this were to be approved, correct?
Well, this is still be private roads. And there, the, some of the, because, to back up a little bit, because of some of the federal requirements on stormwater now, things have changed a little bit since this subdivision was started. There's much more stringent conditions and things that have to be met, and we have a little bit more to work with. It's not going to solve everything, but because of those stormwater regulations, there are pre-construction and post-construction measures that have to be put in place, and Kyle is aware of those, and we would review those. So, there's a more oversight, but again, it's still going to be private streets, private drainage, so, once it's built, and hopefully with a single developer in a small area, we'll all get built. The thing with the Summerland, it's kind of drug over, I don't know how many years, and has definitely gotten a little messed up.
Thank you.
This is Tackett. I wonder, moving forward, if we have, since we're going to have to vote on this, is there any possible way to put a condition on the drainage so that there is something in writing, some legal recourse that if it is not followed through, or if it does not meet engineering or, or codes or anything, that there's at least some teeth in there to kind of make sure that this situation doesn't happen again? Because, and ma'am, I, I do understand what your, your frustration, and right now, it sounds like there's two different things, that what Brett Dahlestrom wants to do, it's moving forward, and what you have is a mess. I mean, it's very clear. It's a mess that we don't want to see repeated again. So, I'm wondering, in the vote, is there any way we can put on a condition or something that before this project moves forward, that it is thoroughly reviewed for storm drainage, and that we have some plan that's very thorough to show that it should stay onsite? I just, I'm just trying to think what we can do, because there, there are two separate issues, if I'm understanding this correctly. And what you're sharing with us is important, and we need to hear that, because we need to look forward. But I don't think there is anything we can do with that one, because it's a different situation. But I think taking what has happened to these people and making sure this doesn't happen again while they're getting that corrected, I'm wondering if there's something we can put into this vote to make sure that that storm problem, that drainage is?
Well, the, the item that's up right now is just the rezon. And we'll get to the site plan amendment next.
Okay. Okay.
If you get to page 52, I think you're on it.
So, and again, I would object...
Excuse me, ma'am. That's already addressed, that it must meet all applicable city codes, including drainage. As to whether or not we can add recourse language, that's beyond us, I believe.
Okay.
That's just my two cents.
So that's about what all we can do within our...
Is just make recommendations, conditions to it.
Okay.
So then I would object to the rezoning. And it should stay single-family, where there's going to be individual lots and grass, and there's not going to be as much hardscape, and there's not going to be all of that coming down into our subdivision. That would be my reason for being, objecting to the rezoning.
On that, to make sure, if that does stay there, can they still put in hard? I'm, I'm just clarifying again, is there a difference in how that is done? I mean, if it's, if it stays what it is, does it have to be grass? If it gets changed? Or does it really, will it matter if someone new comes in? I guess, I guess what I'm trying to understand, if we prove it, don't it prove, I don't know if that changes if it's grass or hard surface or...
Probably a question for staff. How many units could go on that property if it stayed zoned as it is currently? Single-family units?
This is Schrader with staff. Single-family units or two-family units would be permitted. The City of Waterloo does not have a zoning district that prohibits a two-family. We, our lowest residential zoning district is R1. R1 residential district allows single-family homes and twin homes. The only difference between the R1 and the R2 is, is the R1 requires a little bit larger lot size and a little bit larger setbacks. About two-thirds of this property is currently zoned R2, which could have single-family homes or duplexes built on it without having to go through the rezon. About a third of it is zoned the R3 RP, which allows for multifamily, but upon approval of a site plan, and the original site plan didn't identify anything for this location, because it was outside of what was actually being plotted, but it was included in what was rezoned. The original request was to rezon the entire 40 acres, which would have taken, included all of this property to R3 RP, but because, primarily because of opposition from the subdivision to the south, there was that buffer, what is it, 180-foot, I think, 260-foot buffer that was rezoned to R2. So how many units could they put in there? Probably just based on minimum lot size, more than five twin homes, more than 10 units, but based on how you would lay it out and meet setbacks from each other, front yards, and it might get a little complicated, which is why they requested to rezon the site to the R2 RP, which would still limit it to one and two-family homes, but provide a little bit of flexibility so that they didn't have to lay out individual lots with, you know, showing how it would meet individual setbacks. So it's a little hard to answer, for sure.
But I have a shorter answer. They're proposing, sorry, Eric. They're proposing 10 units on 2.38 acres, so that's roughly one unit per 0.238 acres or quarter. In the later staff report for the 12plex recommendation or request, we actually looked into that for the comprehensive plan. Summerland Park area, entire subdivision's close to three units per acre, so that does include the 12plexes being included in that, so it might be slightly higher than that. But right now, that, with that, it would be about 0.33 per house. So this would be slightly lower. It'd be a quarter instead of a third.
Slightly more dense than...
Yep.
And this is Tackett. If we go to the RP, doesn't it give the public more say? Because it has to go before the planning commission, where if we leave it the way it is and there is not the recourse, they can't, okay.
This is Morrison. Are we still in the hearing?
We are.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
The move and seconded to close the hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I would say, if there's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Do we, we have another speaker? Yeah.
I withdraw my, I'll withdraw my motion. I didn't see her, sorry.
Okay.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you so much for having us this afternoon and for listening to our concerns. My name is Dixie Keehoe, and my address is 5608 Summerland Drive. And before I start, what I'd like to have is each of my neighbors that is here stand up, so you can see all of the people that this affects. We are all opposed to this project. I'm another one where my house would be right on the end of the road coming down and that water coming in with us, or to us, into our yards, into our basements. The other comment I'd like to make is, back in 2009, when the grant project came in, we came and talked just like this, and we said that we had a problem with Iowa Development and Jason Guthrie coming in with the project as he proposed it. And we extremely voiced our concern about the water problems then. And, you know, since then, we've had the grant program. We have a lot of beautiful homes, beautiful neighbors now, that are due to that grant project. So that was very good. The problem is, Jason came in, he built the homes, but never took care of any of the problems that were promised to us to be done when that project started. Now, that was five years ago. And we have been trying and trying, the city's been trying and trying. Something has to be done, and I'm very glad to hear that he still owns this, this land. The fact that he hasn't paid taxes, the fact that he won't even mow the green space, which is his responsibility as the developer yet, I'm just very, very, very appalled. I have neighbors on the side of me, an individual neighbor, whose grass and weeds are over three foot tall, and they haven't been mowed. And we've called repeatedly to get that done. That's a travesty. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Larry Tickner, 5623 Summerland. And this bunt's up behind me, and I actually own two lots, and I'm next to the duplex that the road will be going by on the downhill side. And the lady that lives on the east side, she is here, and I take care of her yard and that, but every time we get a rain with just what's there right now, she gets so much water over there that she has some landscaping, and after every rain, I am actually two lots away from her, and in my ditch, all of her wood chips from her landscaping is down there in my ditch. I've seen it where the water's been up to the top of the tile, where it goes underneath our driveways from all the water runoff just right now. And I think if you guys put a road in there, something needs to be addressed with that, because she is going to just get drownded over there with the pavement, you know, from the road, because it's all going to come her direction. And also, when we get rain, I have, like, lakefront property. I have water running behind me, I have water running to the west of me, and I have water running in the, in the, to the north of me, in the ditch. And that's all with grass right now. And I'm not against the duplexes back there, but I think we really do need to address the water problem. And it just came to my attention, we're trying to put more in an area, and that's going to make the yard smaller. So if these people that move in have kids, where are them kids going to play? You're not going to have a yard. So the kids are going to play out in the street, you know, for one thing. And I know I always loved playing, you know, in the street, riding bicycle and that, too, but my mom and dad had a big lot with grass. And, you know, we did a lot of playing in the grass, playing ball and all that kind of stuff. Where's these people going to, where's these kids going to play? So that's mainly what I have. This, a water problem, you're going to flood, her name's Betty, you're going to flood Betty out, because she gets a lot of it right now. And Carla's on the other side, which I call it the upside, uphill side, and for some reason, they get a lot of water that way, too, going clear down to the ditch on Dysert Road. So I think my biggest concern is the, the road coming down into Summerland's going to cause us problems. Thank you.
Any other comments on the rezon request? Last one, Mr. Hellman.
Oh, Helen, Helen Engineering. I just want to reiterate, this is a site plan that's been submitted by Brent Dalstrom, not Jason Guthrie, so please take that into consideration. I don't know if any of these residents have, have worked with Brent before, but I think Brent's had a couple of projects before, and he's always done a really good job on putting together really nice developments, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Any other comments for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's closed. I'll bring it back to the commission for action and further discussion.
This is Morrison. I want to acknowledge that I think most of us at this point understand, we're talking about two different developers, and that what's happened to the people in Summerland is indeed not Brent's fault, but I don't think in good conscience, we can go forward with a project that's going to flood them out. And so I'm kind of leaning towards giving them time to address the existing water problem before we put them further underwater when they're already under.
This is Gustafson. I agree. I think that I would like to see us table this and ask for it to be brought back when they have a succinct plan of what they're going to do with the water runoff, with the water retention, so that we can see it, so the homeowners can see it and feel more at ease that the issue will be taken care of and it's not going to augment what they're already dealing with.
And this is Mike Young, and I would agree with both of those comments, because I've been wrestling with it here. I think on the one hand, infill development is good. We want to have more houses, and that spreads out the tax base for everybody. From the school perspective, that's good, to have development like it should be. And so I am grateful that Brent Dalstrom is looking into developing this, because it may actually lead to some improvements. But on the other hand, I think the fact, the, that we don't have the final water plan does affect all of you that are living there now. I would recommend that if you're meeting with a lawyer, continue to meet with that lawyer and figure out what you can do. It sounds like without Jason Guthrie there, there's a void, and that's where a lot of these problems are coming from. And if you can, I don't know how you create the homeowners' association or get that back up, but once that happens, I think everybody would be better off and able to negotiate, but then also start to address some of the problems, because it sounds like they're not going away, whether there's development on this Dalstrom property or not. And so if that, if it was tabled for another month and you had time to figure out those legal things as well, that might help. But I, I think tabling it might be best, because I don't want to pour cold water on what Brent Dalstrom is doing, if ultimately, that's better for everybody in the long run. But at the same time, I don't know, that's, right now, there are just so many unknowns with Summerland Farms and kind of what's going on. I don't know about the developers' rights as well.
I would agree with all of them, and I, so I, I like the motion on, at least for the zoning, because it, it puts in that clause, it has to be shown to the public. There is, there is a level of accountability. Right now, the way it is zoned, there is not that stringent, if I understand. But if we move it to that, like they require the R2 RP, that P right there puts in that, that you would have to be notified, and there would have to be some accountability. So if I understand that correctly, I would like, since we are developing, we're looking first at just the zoning, not the sign amendment, but the zoning, I would like to make a motion to approve that be made into, that we take the staff recommendation to move it to an R2 RP for the reason, I think the public has a right, especially residents, to have say in this. So I would like to move that we accept the recommendation to at least rezon this area.
Last one. Any plans to be separate?
Site plan definitely would be separate. This would just be for the rezoning. That would give you more rights, because I think we're all feeling this. I think we need to take care of first things first. So I have a motion on the table.
Last one. Move to approve the rezon request?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I need to abstain from this vote for personal reasons. Any further discussion prior to the vote?
And this is just on number three on our, A3 on our agenda, the rezon.
Correct.
Right, just rezon.
And then we'll go to four and five, which is the site plan amendment next.
So if we change the zoning, this is Morrison, they can't automatically proceed with development? They have to get the site plan next?
That's correct.
All right, just making sure understood.
Any further discussion before we go to a roll call vote? Rankin?
Yes.
Gustafson?
No.
Hall?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Buckles?
Yes.
Whitehead abstains. Tackett?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That motion passes five to two.
She, five to three. Your abstained count is... Okay, my phone begins. We'll go on to item A4, which is the site plan amendment request for the same property. And the time is now 5:45. In a hearing scheduled at this time, this is a request, request by Brent Dalstrom for a site plan amendment in the R2 RP, one and two family, one and two family residence district for the, to allow construction for the construction of five new twin home dwellings located southeast of 5609 Summerland Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee, stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, area photos, drawings, and site plan will be mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail," excuse me, "was mailed by regular mail on May 22, 2014." We have a motion received and placed this notice on file.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address. Members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report?
Sandero Staff, being we kind of know some of the backgrounds on this already of the area, I'll just kind of keep it brief. This is a request for site plan amendment to R2 RP Plan Residence District, which is a site plan specific district, and changes to the site plan must be approved through a site plan amendment process as either a major or minor amendment before the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission and the City Council. A lot is 2.38 acres, 103, 672,000 square feet. Based on the density requirements for the R2, there shall be a minimum of 4,000 square feet per family associated with a two-family development, which in this case, 103,672 divided by 4,000 equals out to the potential for 26 units. However, determining density in the RP district is different, as the maximum number of dwelling units permitted in the RP district shall be determined by dividing the net development area by the minimum lot area per dwelling unit required by the zoning district or districts in which the planned unit development is located, and then multiplying by a multiplier of 125 percent. Therefore, 26 units multiplied by a factor of 1.25 allows for the potential possibility of having 33 units upon the site. The applicant is proposing 10 units in this particular situation. On the submitted site plan, a new 26-foot wide private access drive is shown accessing the site from an existing access point off of Dysert Road. This access point would line up directly across from the drive that accesses the Mobile Home Park to the east side of Dysert Road. At the end of this private drive, there is a hammerhead turnaround, which will allow for larger vehicles, such as the fire truck, to be able to turn around and exit property properly. There are dimensions listed upon this hammerhead turnaround. In the near future, a request to name the private street serving the proposed development will be coming for the planning commission. Each duplex will have a two-stall attached garage that is 484 square feet and be one story. The new duplexes will be sided with vinyl siding, which is similar to other dwellings in the area. Each unit will be two bedrooms with a dining and living area, with an overall living space of 1,127 square feet. With this request, staff is recommending the request to the site plan amendment, the R2 RP, be approved for the following reasons. Request is located within the primary growth area. According to the City Waterloo Comprehensive Plan, it could be serviced by the extension of existing utilities. Proposed use area will not appear to have a negative impact, as it would appear compatible with already existing development in the area. Proposed development is within the density requirements as set forth in the zoning ordinance for this particular district, and with the condition that the final site plan meet all city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Any questions for staff? See none? Look to the audience for those who likes to be for or against it. I think we kind of know what those issues are. Anybody else want to add anything?
Brad Wells, 5553 Summerland.
Brad Wells, 5553 Summerland Drive. Just want to, just remind you that all the reasons we just talked about are the same reasons that we would all come up and oppose moving forward so fast. We just need to get the water issues rectified before there's any more hardscape up above us, or there will be many of us flooded out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, Alan Engineering. I just want to remind you, we can't do stormwater retention design without an approved site plan. Without an approved site plan, we don't know what the impervious area is going to be, so it's really difficult to take that next step forward. We need the site plan approved to start doing the stormwater retention design. So please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Anybody else for this request? See none? Look for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is now closed.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this request to give families in Summerland Drive time to address some water issues. And I definitely want to acknowledge, I don't think that this is Brent's issue, but I think the people need some time.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded. And again, I'm abstaining. Any further discussion before the vote?
Who seconded that?
I did.
Thank you. Do a roll call vote on that real quick.
So yes is to table?
Correct.
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Whitehead abstains. Tackett?
Yes.
Rankin?
Yes.
The motion to table passes seven to one.
Yep. When that comes back up, you guys will be notified again. Okay. Time is now 5:51. In a hearing scheduled at this time, this is a request by Brent Dalstrom for a site plan amendment in the R3 RP Plan Multiple Residence District to allow for the construction of two new 12plexes located north of 5743 Summerland Drive. This will require a unanimous vote to waive the notice timeline requirement by the commission to hold the hearing. So, okay, we got it now. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee, stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, drawings, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 22, 2014." Have a motion, receiving places notice on file?
I'm sorry, can we get explanation of?
I was kind of thinking.
You want to just vote yes on the statement first, and then we'll go back to the actual vote you need, or not? I mean, the statement is just to verify that she sent it out.
And it was sent out at?
Was it sent out on the 22nd? This leads me to believe that it was not.
Correct. Oh, is that the wrong date?
What date was it sent out?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth? Well, that's not much time.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is saying we would still have to?
We'll have to go back and vote on that.
We have to vote on this. So first, we need a motion to waive the timeline notice so we can hold a public hearing.
Is it the same?
I don't know if you want more of an explanation on that.
If we vote no, is it the same as tabling it?
Two.
Essentially.
Essentially does.
Same as taking it off the agenda, or if you call it a table.
You take it off the agenda so they would not be able to be on this month's agenda. They'd have to wait till next month at the earliest, or a special meeting.
I just have a hard time voting yes on something that was set on the 28th.
I agree.
With as much community input as we've already got.
My only thought is we're probably going to get the same input if we hold it off for a month.
I mean, yeah, that, that's why it takes a unanimous vote. You know, the goods and the bads of it are, of course, is that a lot of the people are here today, so it's possibly more convenient for them since they're here anyway. At the same time, it is a different location on the, on the other end of the subdivision, so perhaps some of the people didn't get notice of that one being here, so they may not be here. I don't know. We did.
I think we would have more people if we actually had the timely notice. Even though we have a lot here, we would have more, plus we have more time for those people to say hey. Sorry to interrupt.
This is quite it. To Eric's point of it would basically be pulling it off the agenda. If there were residents who wanted to speak, they could still say something during the discussion, or?
True, yeah, Schrader with staff. I mean, it's a site plan amendment request which requires a hearing, but there wasn't proper notice for the hearing. So if it doesn't get the unanimous vote to waive that hearing requirement, then you can't hold a hearing and you can't act on the request. But I mean, yeah, you could still allow discussion if you so chose, even if it did not get that unanimous vote.
I'd like to call the question, please.
Do we have a motion to call on?
Well, it's the, the vote.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, it's been two hours.
That's right.
Okay. All those in favor of waiving the notice timeline requirement? Roll call vote, yes.
So yes is to waive it?
Yes. Yes would be to waive it and allow it on the agenda. No would be not to allow it on the agenda. Hall?
No.
Would you like to keep going?
No, you're good.
Okay.
We're good.
Now, if you could clarify though.
Let's clarify.
Notice, notice will go out again to both on four and five, the tabled item and the?
Yes.
And the 12plex? Okay. Gotcha. So just everybody in the audience, it says on here, the next meeting, it's in four weeks from today on July 1st. This would be here. That's assuming the applicant's still on there, but.
Special meeting.
Oh, okay.
Is there a chance of that?
Well, notice would still have to go out, right?
Correct. Notice would have to go out 10 days before any meeting.
10 days in advance, okay.
Yeah, there is a potential of a special meeting for another request. I believe Patty was trying to make contact with everyone to see if there was the potential of a meeting on?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, thank you.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if we know that answer, if we have a quorum yet or not.
She said she had a quorum when I talked to her.
Did she? Okay.
I made a quorum.
Okay, so. That brings us on to our next item.
So for everyone in the audience, if there is a special meeting on the 17th, you'd be mailed out notice fairly quickly by, at least by the 7th. If there's not, it would be on the July 1st, I believe, is the first Tuesday in July, July 1 meeting, or July 2, one of those two.
It's July 1, I think, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's hash it out when actually can act on it.
Okay. We'd rather hear when we can act, make a decision on it, if that's okay. Thank you. Okay, that brings us on to item B1. This is a special permit request. This is a request by the Waterloo Community School District for a three-year extension to the special permit granted on August 31, 2010, for the purpose of allowing two 23 and a half by 76-foot temporary classrooms to remain on Kingsley Elementary School, which is located at 201 Sunset Road in an R1 one and two family residence district. Staff report?
Zandero staff. Would appear since the modular classrooms have been there since 2010, there has been, been a minimal impact upon the surrounding area. Staff believes the additional time added would not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood until new school boundaries areas are drawn and approved by the Board of Education. Classrooms are located behind a retaining wall along Sunset Road that screen the majority of the building from residents to the south and west. The school district also planted numerous arborvital trees between the sidewalk and the fence along Sunset Road, further screening the classrooms. Property zone R1, one and two family residence district has been zoned as such since the adoption of the ordinance. To the north, south, east, and west, all consist of single-family residences. Future land use map designates this site as a low-density residential. The zoning ordinance requires an education facility obtain a special permit issued by the Board of Adjustment after a recommendation by the planning commission. This is due in part to its ability to be developed in many zoning classifications, as well as the impacts such a development can have on other public infrastructure. The Community School District is requesting to extend the timeframe. They are allowed to have the temporary modular classrooms on the existing site at 201 Sunset Road. In August 2010, the planning commission recommended approval of a one-year timeframe on top of the one-year timeframe administratively approved by staff. The Board of Justice approved the request with a two-year timeframe beyond the one year already approved by staff. Today, the Board of Education for the district is requesting a second extension to allow for the classrooms to remain for an additional two years, which would be 2014, 2015, and 2015, 2016 school years, and an option for authority if needed. Staff would recommend that due to not being known if a third year is needed, that the request be approved for a straight three years. District has submitted documentation that shows enrollment at the school is, it was 345 in 2003, and now today it is 458 students. On average, over the last seven years, enrollment is increasing at the school by four and a half percent per year. The district has noted that there are multiple factors contributing to the increasing enrollment at the school, noting that the demographics of the Kingsley district are changing, as older generations are selling their houses in the area, and younger families with children are buying houses in the district. Also, the No Child Left Behind Act overseen by the federal government requires that district offer choices to students in district schools that have unachieving scores to be able to open enroll to other schools in the district that have achieving scores that are higher. To counteract the growing enrollment at Kingsley, the Board of Education is in the process of redrawing school district boundary lines to be able to balance out students. That process of redistricting and phasing out students currently at the school, whose new boundary may change, will take two to three years. The goal of the Community School District and the City Waterloo should be for a smooth transition for existing students that results in a positive impact upon the neighborhood long term. Staff recommends that the special permit to extend the temporary timeframe for three years to allow the temporary modular classrooms to remain upon the site be approved for the following reasons. The modular classrooms have not appeared to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, and the request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area.
Any questions for staff?
This is Tackett, because this is before I was on the commission. Is there a reason why we have the modular? Is it temporary classroom? Is it until we build permanent, replace the modular? I guess, I'm a little unclear as to why we have the modulars.
The applicant's here if you'd like to address that, so. Yeah, and this is Mike Young. Superintendent Gary Norris is here. Gary and I were, Dr. Norris and I were both around when that came through the commission. I'll abstain from voting on this. It's always a little strange in saying I'm going to abstain and then standing up here and talking, but I'm on the commission because I'm on the school board. And so Dr. Norris can correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess there was the, with No Child Left Behind, there was one year where it seemed like there was kind of a perfect storm coming together with voluntary transfers from other schools. And one of the requirements is you've got to, if you have to open up your school to voluntary transfers from schools that are designated, falling behind on the list, that they've got to come in. So there are very few options to do. You can't say, well, the school is full, and those students can't voluntarily come in. You have to go to other things like going to satellite schools and satellite grades, where you'd say, we'll take out all the fifth graders at Kingsley and move them to Kitchell, for example, even though they'll technically be Kingsley students. Or you can add modulators and that sort of thing. So there was one summer where I think everybody was struggling quickly to add classroom space. It was unique to Kingsley in some ways, because Kingsley is one of just two renovated buildings. Kingsley and Lowell were renovated. All the other new elementaries were new, and so those buildings are much more flexible, where they had kind of common areas that the school district could go in and build temporary walls in the common areas and almost make a new classroom, that sort of thing. Kingsley as a receiving school, though, was hindered because it was a renovated building, so it's not nearly as flexible. Smaller hallway, smaller classrooms, that sort of thing. So the modulators were essentially at that time about the only viable option to be put in. But then, as you see, the enrollment has continued to increase even after the voluntary transfers. I think the number's just 31. Kingsley still is growing at a much bigger rate, and that's partly because there are more kids in the neighborhood.
Just to kind of touch upon a little bit more, too, is that, you know, Kingsley and Lowell were existing schools that had the ability to have a little bit of room for renovation, not a lot of room. The City of Waterloo was very supportive of trying to keep those schools in their current locations to keep strengthening those neighborhoods. I believe all the new schools are built for 450 students, with the ability to expand up to 650 with an expansion plan in place, with the exception of, I think Orange is the only one that was built at 650 from day one. So the, I believe the Waterloo Community Schools has done a good job of, of providing the new school environment and providing for future expansion at each site, with the exception probably of Kingsley and Lowell, so.
And just to provide a further explanation, this is in conjunction with redistricting, and that's why it's, it's temporary, it's three years. I think the long-term, the modulators are not, certainly not a long-term plan to do. So the district looked into expanding Kingsley to put it up to a 400, from a 350 student building to a 450 student building. Dr. Norris, I think we got the number in there, but it's, would cost much more just to put on, is it six classrooms, or six classrooms at Kingsley than it was to?
Nine point two million.
Nine point two million, which is almost double of what it costs to renovate it in the first place. Yeah. And that is because it's such a small area to work with, so the site plan would be tough. Plus, you don't just add classrooms and think that's it. You've then got more kids, so you've got to expand the media center.
Sure.
And the cafeteria, that sort of thing. So bathrooms, even the gymnasium. So that's where the, the cost comes from on that. So then you're looking at redistricting, doing boundaries, and so that's what just started the process and doing that. And you see that in your board package as well.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Has there been redistricting since that initial application in 2010?
No, hasn't.
There was discussion at one point.
There was discussion at one point, and part of that was, the Orange Elementary Building just opened up, and it was, as Noel stated, Noel was built kind of on the same model as Highland?
Orange is the same as Highland, yeah.
Same as Highland, but what the extension was, there's kind of the three fingers that stick out, and there were just extensions, was it two or four more classrooms on each end of the extension. So Orange was added to be bigger. The thought of the, one way that was, was considered was, once Orange opened, it would open up the possibility to do redistricting, because then Orange would be completed and could take more students. So the redistricting that the facilities committee and Dr. Norris have gone through is to add, would be to add a sizable area to Orange as well. Wouldn't be directly from Kingsley. I think Kingsley would be, I think the plan is now, Dr. Norris, Irving, and you got it. This, Dr. Norris, he's waited patiently for two hours here, so I'll stop talking.
Obviously, the board, the school board president has a great handle on, on what we're doing, and I don't want to overstep. We do have a redistricting plan. The reason I'm not handing it out to you tonight is, the school board hadn't had a chance to act on it until this coming Tuesday, Monday night.
Monday night.
We're very serious about redistricting. We didn't really have the tools to do it last time, Mr. Hall. So it's kind of, as Mike said, now that we have more classrooms in the district, it'll be easier. But we have, we have a legitimate redistricting plan that'll transfer over a three-year period, 72 students out of, out of the Kingsley zone. And the reason it takes two or three years is we have a practice of, once a kid, once a child has started in a school, they get to finish in that school. They don't get exited out next year. So grandfathering, as, as the residences change hands, then a new, a new student coming in does not get the grandfathering provision, if that makes sense. So if the resident sells, they immediately start in the new zone, or if a renter changes, et cetera.
Any questions for Dr. Norris?
So you didn't have the opportunity to do that in the first three years, because you didn't have the bigger school in order to shuffle people?
Exactly. It would have been rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. And the other thing that really, Mike mentioned, a perfect And the other thing that really, Mike mentioned, a perfect storm. The No Child Left Behind thing brought an influx of 50 children just one year, and we haven't allowed any more children to move in since that time. And so by next year, only 25 students out of the 458 this year will be actually from what would have been essentially the old Blackhawk School Zone. Most of them, most of the kids that came to Kingsley were from Blackhawk School. So that neighborhood of Kingsley is, through gentrification, is changing rapidly, and we are probably going to have to, because that school was kept at 360, as Noel said, we're probably going to have to, well, we will have to change the boundaries now, and then, who knows? If the houses keep turning over, we'll have to redistrict again in a few years after that, so.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak to the special permit request?
I'm Tim Oval, 414 Prospect Boulevard. I'd like to start, I'm not going to address anything with the school district at first, I just want to ask you, the members, what does temporary mean? Is it four years? Is it seven years? Are we going to come back in 2016 and ask for three more years? That's, that's an issue. All the neighbors in the area, there are quite a few that are upset that the modulators are there. Personally, I'm not opposed one way or the other, other than I do have to ask why the modulators had kindergarten children there, and we all know how nice and cold it was last year. Be that as it may, like I say, I go back to temporary. We give them two years, one years. We're going to be here again, once again. And then I'll finally address the letter that the school board sent out, and I believe it was you, Dr. Norris, that may have signed that one. They have the ability to take care of this issue and remove those modulators by the math they gave out. And I know there's new math now, and I'm kind of an old schooler, but I'll kind of muddle through. If you do redo the district as you've laid out, and you pull the grandfather clause, the problem with the modulators go away. Now, going forward, as you've stated, we have gentrification or reverse gentrification because our neighborhood's getting younger, do we need to bring them back again? Will we, you can take care of the problem, and your numbers that you laid out on the letters you sent to us, by removing the grandfathering clause and redistricting, you can get rid of the modulators, everybody will fit, okay? The next question is, do we come back again? I mean, the next question is, where are we at for the rebuilding of Kingsley? Because if it continues to grow, we're just back here one way or the other with these modulators. I would prefer that you do the right thing and take them out, or just keep them there and maybe use it as staff facility for the time being, knowing full well you're going to be back in this problem in two or three years at the proper growth. But at least you've brought all the children inside. Whether the modulars stay or not, you're right, you can't really see them from the street, okay? My issue is putting those kids in there. I don't care if they're fifth graders or if they're kindergarteners. The winter we had last year, walking back and forth, is not anything I think we want our children to have. So you have the ability to do the solution. The only unfortunate thing is, the school district won't be forced to do it unless you, the planning zoning, say we will not extend that.
Okay, and if I could, and Dr. Norris, I'll, sir, I'll try to adjust those and then turn it over to Dr. Norris as well. On the first issue, on the kindergarten, kindergarteners being in there, I can speak from experience because my son is there now in kindergarten. He actually liked it, because he started at kindergarten this year. He liked the fact that he wasn't going in the, he calls it the big building, and so he was a little anxious about going in the big building, and he looks at the modulators as his school, and he takes some pride in that. So they're actually very nice inside. They're air-conditioned, they're heated. There weren't any, any problems with that. But what you addressed, though, on your second point about, we could do this this year, we talked all along about contingency plans, and what we're trying to do is balance two things. Redistricting is not good. Nobody wants to do it just because it'd be nice for people, you know, people are buying houses all the time, and they're not sure if or when they're going to have kids, and then they do, and they, you know, they don't like their plans to be changed in that regard. So you got that on the one hand. Nobody likes to do redistricting. But on the other hand, we've got a really full building at Kingsley that doesn't have the flexibility, I guess, of other schools. And so what we looked at, yes, what is temporary? It's three years. It's, well, two years with the option for the third going now, and that's, that's all the district is asking for, because it allows to, as Dr. Norris talked about, grandfather those kids in. So it's not as an abrupt change. The options, if we didn't, this wasn't approved by the city, would be probably going to redistricting right now, and then remove, if anybody was out, even if they were fourth grader, rising into fifth grade, they would be out next year as well, or going to the satellite school. Where you just take one grade and put it at another building. The kids, I think generally, Dr. Norris, they would ride the bus to Kingsley, and then they get on another bus and go to, let's say, Orange, for example. You just take one. So we do have those contingency plans. Nobody wanted to put the modulators there, I guess, in the first place, but we're trying to.
Four years ago, we, you've obviously had this discussion to get a two-year plus, and here we are again, and now we're asking for two plus one, three plus one? Three plus one? I mean, there has to be a point at which somebody, it needs to finally say, boom, you're going to be forced, well, not you, because you're retiring, but your predecessor, the person beyond you will be the one that eventually is going to have to. And barring it being done with the school board or pressure coming, this is the point of us in the neighborhood to be able to say, hey, let's get this straightened out.
Do you have a child in school?
Yes. We have two children.
It's always easy when you have a child in school that's within the area that's not going to be zoned out. So every, for 32 years as I've been a superintendent, if you lived near a school, you always came to public meetings and you said, go ahead and rezone. But if you lived on the outskirts, where the boundaries of the 80 kids that are getting taken out next year, if we go with this gentleman's way, then those 80 students and their parents have a little different feeling about it. So they say, whoa, you didn't give us any time to prepare, you're cutting my kids' education off in fourth grade or second grade, whatever. Yeah, the modulators aren't perfect, but I found it really unique to come to Waterloo, although I love this place. But I was in Florida, where 25 to 30% of all the students in Florida are in modular classrooms. The kids actually like them, and I came here, and it was a dirty word, and I, I just didn't understand that. But they are very suitable, very safe classrooms. The reason young children are in there is because there's also another zoning ordinance. There's a building fire code ordinance that says that young, or, young children cannot be upon second or, second floors of buildings. So we made a good faith request three years ago. What we did not have any handle on at that moment was the rapid gentrification of the neighborhood. I will take full blame for that. We didn't do an exhaustive enrollment study because we weren't growing that fast in Waterloo schools, and it seems like we are now. So it's nothing personal. We have no desire to keep the modulators there. There will never be, mark my words, $9.2 million, there will never be an expansion of Kingsley School. It's not affordable anymore. And the parents there at Kingsley School will tell you the, the traffic is horrific anyway, so it will be a lot better for the city for the, the school to remain at 360, and that's, that's the maximum limit we're putting on it now. So we just ask for three years, and then we're at making that request in good faith.
I would like to say something. I'm Sherri Oll, I also live in 414 Prospect. First of all, I do think that we should rezone about every five years. We are transient country. People do come and go, and to assure the proper kids are going to the proper schools, we should redistrict every, about every five years or so. Two, we don't live in Florida. We live in Iowa. We have four seasons, and I am opposed to this extension. And the school district did purchase three houses to expand, and I think four years is long enough for the school district to decide what they want to do with Kingsley.
This is Tackett. I can understand both sides. I'm originally a native of California. That's where I received my certification as a teacher. Taught for 20 years. I've written a book. I've written curriculum. Completely understand what it's like to be a teacher, manage a classroom, and work with staff and on that end. And I'm also a parent with grown children, and now I have grandchildren in the district. So I understand, both spectrums aside. I'm originally from a warm climate, but moving here, living here for 16 years, it does get a little chilly, so that is something that concerns me, is, I don't know about the environment of the modular, but I know that I would want to, what's best for children, both as a parent, grandparent, and I taught for kids many, since I did transfer, so my teaching of the area know me as Missland. But out in California, that means, that was my former career, was a teacher. So I would want to see what's best, so I know I would like to have information, because I am not as familiar with modular. I do know what modules were out there, and that's a lot different than in this kind of climate, because I know it's temporary, so I don't know, I don't know that much about them. I just know it does get cold, even in the permanent buildings, you're going to fill a draft. So I can speak from both ends, up, down. I just know Title V requirements out there, ratios, and Title V I can quote, Title 22 I can quote. I'm not as familiar with the Iowa codes. There are some that I'm a little familiar with, and I know it's a little bit different standards. I know the education, when I came here, we were number one in the nation. I think we're now 25. So I have seen that slip. Used to be, when I was in California, all you had to do is say you had an Iowa education, you got a job, you were first of the pick. I understand that has changed. So I don't know, I'm passionate, why I moved my family here to Iowa, and they've received a good education. But I, I think first and foremost, it's, it's the children. They're our future, they're our future citizens. So I think that's just my comments. I think we need to consider what's best for them.
But going forward, it almost seems like the way out of this is to give them a one-year extension with no additional and forced to come back and reapply for it. Then that puts the feet to the fire. If you say it's going to happen next year, gives you the year. You know, that's totally acceptable. But a three-year with a year extension, we're just kicking the can down the road. And, and we did the same thing with the remodeling on the school. They put out hun, the school district put out hundreds of thousands of dollars buying some houses around there, and in effect missed the bus. So instead of four, that became six, is now nine million, and you're right, you're not going to drop nine million into that building. So a one-year extension, and, and if you want beyond that, come back and ask for it again. That puts your feet to the fire. And I'm talking to you as school board, also not as zoning here. I mean, that, that's totally acceptable. Because I agree with you, doctor. Telling all the people to go sucks. It hurts the little kids.
No, but fortunately, what we, when we go through the redistricting with the school district, please come to that meeting, too, and, ma'am, you know, say your comments there that we should be doing this more often. It's, the three years, the two years with the extension for the third year was the best compromise that I think the committee that's been working on this could come up with that would balance the interest that you talk about with having a really crowded school, but then also being fair to the students and the families that are already there. And so that's why it's brought up, and why the request is brought before you now.
A one-year extension, if you have to, you're going to come back with, at that point, the rest of this board is going to ask for, you had it, what happened in that 12 months? You can either say, here's what happened, mitigating circumstances, or, or you're just not getting it done. You know, it'll become very apparent 12 months from now.
I will agree to a one-year extension, however, the school has to come up with a plan on what they're going to do with the three houses to expand, to accommodate.
Oh, that's, that's, that's school district, that's nothing to do with this.
But that's how I feel.
Okay.
If I just, I want them gone.
Yeah. Well, one of the, the tough things I would say on the school board is figuring out the reason the, the request was brought to you like it is, is because there's a lot of kind of chicken or the egg sorts of things going with this. The school district, I think, with rebounding, if that's a word, would have to go, would be much more aggressive if it was just a one-year extension with, again, you saying, okay, that's it, there's just one more year to do it. It would have to be much more aggressive this year. In fact, we'd probably have to redistrict right now, and even work that, maybe.
And I'm not for grandfathering it, I think that.
No.
I would say that there are many people that probably, probably are for grandfathering it.
If you get three years, you're going to take three years, or two years. That's why I say, I mean, I, I run a manufacturing business, if I tell my people, ah, we don't need to get 47 sliders out this week, we only get whatever you can, I ain't going to get the production out. You know, I mean, and if, if you got that year, you got a deadline to work towards. It's not going to drift beyond, and well, we can wait a little on this, maybe. You have to get the work done. I, I do it, most everybody else here, the city folks, you guys got a certain amount of work you got to get done, you can't let it slide, and a deadline is the quickest way to make that happen.
Yeah. And please understand, I'm not dismissing your comments, just from being through the rebounding process before. I would say there are probably many other people that, whose kids are at Kingsley right now, who would feel differently, if they, and that's what Dr. Norris alluded to, that they don't live as close. So it wasn't, three years wasn't pulled out of the air, but getting back to your, your first question, what is temporary? Temporary was basically three years. I think that would allow the district to tell people in the neighborhoods, and tell realtors and everybody else, this is changing eventually, so don't buy your house, you know, in this area if you want to go to Kingsley, because that might be switched to Kitchell or Irving, I guess, or the same with Lou Henry and Kitchell, or Lou Henry and Orange. But it would allow for the numbers, and Dr. Norris has those to work out.
Making everybody fix the boundaries now versus then, I think it helps everybody in the city getting those boundaries changed. If indeed that's what's a mess in certain neighborhoods, and I agree with you, the faster you get that done, I mean, why, why does an economy have problems? Because not from any external problems, usually it comes from uncertainty. You can't plan for it.
Yeah, and that's what we're.
You can't leave this go for two or three years. We have uncertainty again. Henceforth, a one-year deadline that if you want more, you have to come and ask for it next year focuses everybody and gets it done.
So if we want to go forward, just for the sake of time, we decided that three years is too long, we would have to put a motion to deny this request, right? And then they would have to come up with another.
You could make your own motion.
Okay. I'm going to move to deny this request.
We have to close the hearing, though, right?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
There's no hearing.
Okay. I'm just trying to move things along, and I'm just going to throw that out there to, that, yeah, to deny the request so that hopefully I can go back and, I don't know, just maybe work something now, and, because I did actually get phone calls on this, with people that were saying, basically were saying position for the same reasons. So it's not just, I did get phone calls on that.
I just don't want it 15 years later, and they're still here. There has to be a deadline, there has to be a solution, and it needs to be in a timely manner.
Well, I just, I put the motion out there, and if I know anybody wants a second or move forward.
I'm with Mike. I have to abstain because I work for the district.
It's up to you.
Is it, is it easier for us, is it easier for us to vote on the approval of the motion versus?
I mean, obviously, if we don't give a second to this, the motion dies, we'll have to wait for another motion.
Okay. You have to get another motion. If she gets a second, you have to vote on that, and then it's done.
I could do some Jeopardy music or something.
What is?
So I would think that enough time has passed that that motion has died.
Yep.
So anybody can make a new motion.
I would make the motion to approve the special permit, to extend the temporary timeframe for three years.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the special permit request as written. Any further discussion?
If I were to have jumped in first, I would have probably went for a two-year extension, because it sounded like that was kind of the timeframe that sounded like it could work, but the third year was almost a cushion. I don't remember what gave the report, but that's kind of the way it sounded. That was.
That's why I put my motion out there, because I didn't know else to look at a different plan.
That's just my comment, and there's a motion on the floor.
Just answer from the staff, just to answer that, too. They, they asked for two years with an optional third, and that was kind of what we did last time. Looking at, you know, they, I think they kind of have a two-year plan in place to try to get down to the number. The, the reason we threw the third in, because they were asking for the optional third, and the reason they're asking for the asking for the optional third is because of the X factor of not knowing within the district growth. They may need that third year. Obviously, I think if they can meet it in two years, I'm sure they're going to want to move the modulars out of there as fast as they can too.
Oh, nobody likes the modulars.
So this is to keep it from coming back and having us to extend that for that optional year?
Correct.
Correct. So I think the motion's correct. Any other comments before the vote? None? We'll do a roll call vote.
Young abstains. Morrison?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Tackett?
No.
Rankin?
Yes.
Johnson abstains. Hall?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Five to three. And that goes on to Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjust, Board of Adjustment, yes, meets on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Nobody has a calendar?
On the 24th.
And just for anybody that's.
Four o'clock in this room.
I'm sorry. Just for anybody that's watching, just for public disclosure, it'll be discussed at the next school board meeting, which is on Monday night, on the, I think it's the ninth. Is that right?
What time is that at?
That's at 6:00 PM at the, I'm sorry, it's 5:00 PM. We've gone to our summer hours. At the Administrative Service Center on Washington Street. So that'll be, yeah, five o'clock this upcoming Monday. That's more on the discussion of the redistricting and the boundaries. Thank you.
Next is a plat request. This is a plat request by Robson Homes, Inc. for a seven-lot preliminary plat of Prairie Meadows Estates, generally located east of Morning Dove Drive. Staff report?
This is Volker Staff. The request for, by Robson Homes, Inc. for the preliminary plat of Prairie Meadow Estates would create seven lots ranging from .44 acres to 3.13 acres in size for residential development on approximately 20.63 acres. Street shown of the preliminary plat will be dedicated to the city for public street use upon approval of the final plat. Access to these shown, access is to, to, access is shown through an extension of Morning Dove Drive, and also a connection with Grindstone Circle to allow for future development to the east. The subdivision ordinance requires the preliminary plat submissions include the criteria as brown, such as boundaries of property, post-streets, easements with a right-of-way, contours, utility locations, all of which are provided on the preliminary plat. Therefore, Staff recommends that the request for the preliminary plat of Prairie Meadow Estates be approved for the following reasons. The plat is in accordance with subdivision ordinance and can be served by extension of existing utilities. The plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classify this area as residential. The plat is, will create additional infill development site in the primary growth area, subject to the following conditions. The applicant must submit a deed of dedication that is generally consistent with the deed of dedication of adjoining subdivisions.
Any questions for Staff?
Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the plat request? I just have a comment. We're basically, we've already voted on a site plan for this plat that didn't really exist, right? If you're looking chronologically how things should have went.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, technically, they, they wouldn't have to plaid it into separate lots. They could show it all as one large development area. I mean, and put in a, there's different ways they could do it. This is the way they've chosen to do it. In case you're questioning what should go first, I mean, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing, because they have options. If, if the plat was not approved, they could still build the site plan. It would just be built different ways with possibly dedicating the streets later. You could dedicate the streets as a separate action and a lot without the plat, but this is the more standard way to do it.
Sorry, my developer brain was kicking.
It's all right, it's all right. I'm just trying to make our agenda make sense, too.
Trying to make our meeting longer.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve as proposed with the restriction of the deed of dedication.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve a plat request subject to the one deed of dedication condition. Further discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion carries. Right. Packet, since we jumped item D earlier, we go to page 107 in our packet. This is a vacate request by the City of Waterloo to vacate the 20-foot platted alley generally adjacent to 319, excuse me, 316 through 318 West Third Street.
This is Grandma Staff. The City of Waterloo is proposing to vacate the existing platted 20 by 160-foot alley. It is located between the former Operation Threshold property at 300 Jefferson Street and the Kissner Building at 316 to 318 West Third Street. There is a 15-inch sanitary sewer line and overhead electric line located within this portion of the alley. The sewer line does serve the property at 316 to 318 West Third Street. So there will be an easement that will need to be retained over the entire portion of the alley. The City of Waterloo did purchase the Operation Threshold building in 2013 after they constructed a new building along Lafayette Street as part of the new human services campus. The city did demolish that building and would like to construct a new parking lot with landscaping on that property. In addition to the property, the parking lot and several tree plantings would be located within this portion of the alley. That's why the vacation of that alley is being requested. Doesn't appear that the alley is being used for any vehicular or pedestrian traffic. The other portion of the alley was vacated prior to construction of the Sports Plex facility, and this area was not included at that time because the adjacent properties were not owned by the City of Waterloo. As noted, there are existing utilities in the alley, so an easement will be, need to be retained. Staff is recommending approval of the vacate, as the alley would not appear to be needed for any present or future right-of-way needs, and will not have any negative impacts on the traffic conditions in the area. And request would allow for the construction of a new parking lot for, for the Cedar Valley Sports Plex facility, which would appear to have a positive impact on the area by providing onsite parking, and subject to the condition that utilities may be retained over, under, and upon the entire area to be vacated.
Any questions for Staff?
Anybody in the audience like to speak to the vacate request? None? Bring it back to the motion, or to the commission for action?
Move to approve the vacate request, platted alley located adjacent to 316, 318, West Third Street, subject to utilities may be retained.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the vacate request, subject to the one staff condition. Any further comments? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That request passes. Next is another vacate request. This is a request by Thirteen Associates LLC to vacate a 0.631 acre portion of right-of-way, generally located at the northwest corner of the intersection of South Hackett Road and Green Hill Road. Staff report?
Okay, the area to be vacated, oh, this is West Room Staff, sorry. The area to be vacated is a portion of excess right-of-way from the Interstate Substitution Green Hill Road project. There are no utilities in the area to be vacated. The reason for the vacation of the excess right-of-way has twofold. It'll increase water retention, make room for more water retention, and inadvertently will provide more area for display. So therefore, Staff recommends the request to vacate 0.631 acres of excess right-of-way be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate will not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The request to vacate is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. The request would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Are there any questions for Staff?
Anybody in the audience like to speak to the vacate request? Back to the commission for action?
Staff, did I move that we approve the request to vacate to the acres?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the vacate request. Any further comments? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That request carries. Next is a request by Dennis Hagenow to vacate the west 40 feet of David Street, located south of West Parker Street. Staff report?
This is Grandma Staff. I won't go into the, a lot of the background details, because this was before the commission last month. But this request is a little different than the last month's request, is that, in that, this is a request to vacate the west 40 feet of David Street only. It is an 80-foot wide right-of-way area. The request was before the commission at last month's meeting, where the request to vacate the entire 80-foot wide easement was unanimously denied. This request is different in that the applicant is now only requesting to vacate the west 40 foot of the easement, therefore leaving the eastern 40 feet as an open easement for road purposes, which would appear to give adequate access to the adjacent property to the east at 451 to 453 West Parker Street. The applicant had placed barricades along that entire 80-foot of the property back in October of 2013. However, he, he has had them moved back 40 feet to only barricade the area that he is now requesting to vacate. The applicant and the adjacent property owner have not come to an agreement in regards to the vacating of the remaining area. So at this time, the request is to only vacate the western half. If an agreement can be made that is amenable to both sides, then the applicant may come back before the commission to vacate that remaining 40-foot portion. Therefore, Staff is recommending that the request to vacate the western 40 feet of David Street be approved, as the area of right-of-way would not appear to be needed for any present or future right-of-way needs. There would appear to be adequate access for the adjacent property, as the east 40-foot would still remain a public access easement, and subject to the following condition, that utility easement may be retained over, under, and upon the entire 40-foot area to be vacated.
Any questions for Staff?
Were the, were the owners of the adjacent property, the jet lounge, were they notified? I don't think I see them.
We've had conversations.
Okay. But they knew it was going to be on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
So this is not going to end the war. It's just a temporary Band-Aid.
I missed last month.
Dito.
I saw the minutes. Anybody in the audience like to speak?
Yes. This is Mike Young from the Dunn Law Firm, and I'll keep this very, very brief. But the Hagenows are here and have waited patiently. This is a good faith attempt on their part to protect their property. The biggest concern was parking and trash, some damage to the property, and then also liability issues with parking that was on there. And so that's why the barricades were placed there initially. We submitted this because it would get half of the property out there that wasn't needed for access at all. While we waited for the jet lounge to finalize, they said last month it'd take them a month or two months to finish the paving and the work that they talked about. That came from Andy Huffman during the meeting. And so we're bringing this now, temporary. For full disclosure, we probably will come back later, because the concern there is still parking versus the access. And I just got this on my phone, I'll slide it over. This is a picture, if you could hand that around. It's a picture taken two or three days after the barricades were moved back from the 40 feet. And you see the parking there along the side. The parking along the side that's on the public access is full. I think that was a Thursday or Friday afternoon. And so please understand, we're not trying to be disrespectful in coming back before the commission for that 40 feet, or 37 feet, or 34 feet, whatever the jet decides to do with their paving. But that's why we're coming back again, because it's just the, the parking on there is, is still continuing. But this was our good faith attempt to give the jet an additional month to come back and finish up their project, so.
So is it, beyond the barricades being there, is it posted, private property, do not park, park at your own risk of being towed?
That's a good question. We asked the city, this is a city easement, and so it's the city that's basically requesting to keep the parking there. Eric, we talked several times about that, as to what the city would do in terms of liability, if somebody were injured that was parking on there, and also putting up no parking signs. I don't know where those conversations went with Sandy Greco and.
Eric Trader, city planner, I'll try and brief here. Yeah, we did review this with the city attorney's office, who did not feel that there would really be any additional liability issues because of the technically being owned, even though owned by Mr. Hagenow, it's still a public street from a, from that standpoint. So we didn't think the liability would be any different than one on a regular public street. And for the no parking, that one was a little bit muddier. It, it is really an access easement, but the underlying, the 1903 action just basically reserves it for street purposes. And you can park on a street, so it would take separate council action to pass an ordinance designating it as no parking. And so, I mean, that's something that could be looked at, but it further kind of muddies the water. So at this point, we were hoping to see if we could, you know, get both parties under an agreement on the east 40 feet as well. But this takes care of the west 40 feet, and hopefully the east 40 feet can still get worked out as well.
Yeah, and that's it. We, we don't have anything in writing from the city on the liability issue, but we'll keep working at it now. The other thing was, now what we didn't want to do is call the police every time a car's parking there. We're not trying to, you know, add to everybody's workload, I guess, unnecessarily. But I just instructed the Hagenows, if you're around there and it's full of cars, just take a picture of it, because we'll be back here before the commission. Not to waste your time, not to waste anybody else's time, but just, that's why, that's why we're here. I will not belabor this anymore. It's 6:45.
And I hate to do this, I apologize to everyone here, but I do have a couple of questions. Just to try to get a grasp for, I mean, from last month's meeting, there seemed like there was a level of contention there with, with the property owners. Just to, to get a grasp of the mindset, I guess, of, of Mr. Hagenow, how long did he own the building and that property prior to buying, purchasing that, that bit of land on David Street? Okay. Okay. And, and, you know, last month, the issue of litter and that, that came up. I would assume the same things were being found for those six years prior. I mean, or is this, is this the litter issue, is that a more recent occurrence?
It's been the whole time.
So then I guess, my final question is, what was the expected use of this property?
I'm sorry.
Of David Street, yeah. What was the expected use of, I mean?
Want it to clean it up, in that regard, because it was just kind of a no man's land. And so it took about three years to get the property?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, about three years to get the property from the railroad. So the, the use of it was to basically clean it up and stop the litter, stop the damage. It was cars driving, some of them would actually drive around in the front yard of his building as well. And it was the trash. It was, it was condoms and needles and that sort of thing. So, yeah, it was, it was to clean it up.
And, and I don't mean to sound disrespectful, I guess, with, with the questions, but I guess I don't understand why the street had to be bought in order to stop that action.
Oh, because the railroad wasn't doing it, and the city wasn't doing it.
Okay. But had that been where the original line of that property was up to David Street, had there been a fence established, like it sounds like there's, sort of sounds like where this is going, I guess I don't see recognizing the impact on the business. I just have a hard time even, even supporting this measure. I understand wanting to clean it up, but outside of putting them sort of out of business, I don't see the benefit of taking the entire street versus putting the fence, you know, either 40 or 80 feet back to the, to the line of the property.
A couple of things on the business. I went back, fortunately, now you can see all these meetings on YouTube. So gone back and looked at it. And it was made clear by, I think the city, by the applicants as well, by Steve Scram and by Andy Huffman and Matt Ulchig, that we were talking about access. And it was access into the property. I think that's in the staff report. It wasn't parking. And so that's why the request is today to, everyone agrees that the, the west 40 feet shouldn't be there for parking, and it's not needed for access. So therefore, the city does not need to still maintain the easement over it. As for the business, the issue that comes up is, the jet submitted the plan in 2008 to pave their parking lot and do the storm art of retention there. They also then resubmitted it in 2009 and added like four parking spaces, but parallel parking spaces. So the issue of the business and what had gone on there, I think that's a fair question for the jet as to why they haven't improved their parking lot, like they said they would do in 2008, like they said they would do in 2009. And like they said they would do last month several times, saying they'll get it paved in the next month or two. Now, that was Andy. Now, what Matt said was, they'll get it done this construction season. Once they get it done, then we'll all know what needs to be done. Once they get it done, then we'll all know what needs to be done with the east 40 feet. Because whether, they need 20 feet, if you recall those discussions, they need 20 feet for the fire lane plus the parking on their property. So it, there's got to be something from the Jet too to follow through with their plans, parking, or if they were to change their parking configuration there, that's fine, then let us know. Because then we'll know exactly what's needed for access and what's not, and we'll request the vacate of that part that's not.
I just want, this is Morrison. I want to understand, since I missed last month. The goal is to move it from the railroad, who wasn't doing anything for enforcement, and the city to private property so that you can take action to keep it clean.
Correct, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And that was the genesis of it. It was, I think, the trash.
Well, it's already private property.
Yeah.
He already owns it.
But the vacate is for a portion of the street or the road that was being maintained.
It's for the vacation of the city.
It's an odd situation of a public street on privately owned land.
I want to know how we got into this.
Took hours. Fortunately, we're not dealing with those, just dealing with this one.
Please come up. Please go up to the microphone.
Okay. There were a twofold reason for the property acquisition. I put the concrete blocks around because the Jet has had trouble staying off of my property even before this. So I put the concrete blocks down and had a deal with a fence company to put a six-foot fence on top of it because I wanted a secure storage area. And I never, I had the deal so he could do it in the wintertime on top of those concrete blocks. And of course, I wasn't able to do that because of all this. But there was value to me there. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you expect that the litter is still going to exist with the 40-foot?
Because they're parking up against it. And they throw bottles and break them against my building. And when I go over there to maul, my wife starts out first and she picks up broken bottles and all kinds of cans. And occasionally, I hit one of those cans with my lawnmower and it makes a lot of noise. And she's even seen and picked up some prophylactics in the area. Now, I don't know how all that works out, but it does happen. It's just litter.
I have a question for maybe staff. Has the other folks involved here acquiesced to this in any way or...
This is Anderson with staff. I mean, they were aware of the request was on the agenda at the 40-foot mark. And they're obviously not here. I think they must have at least been okay with it. I don't mean to speak for them, but they were aware of it.
Probably something to help you understand, and I believe it was a comment that you made at the previous meeting that, and I'm not trying to quote you, but I think the general idea was that you thought that that quitclaim deed took away that access, right? And that wasn't the case, so that kind of completely changes the complexity of the whole issue. And the Jet Lounge people thought they would, could continue to have the right to use it because there was an easement across it. They made the mistake of not purchasing their half of it in the first place. But having said that, you know, I think if you can get this through with their agreement, I think that's a good deal for you.
Good start.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Bring it back for discussion and hopefully some action.
So this might be a simple question. This is Morrison, but I wanted to understand, the offer price is marked NA because he already owns it, is that why? Because I've not ever seen that before. Okay, I get it.
So I would move that we go ahead and approve this application with the conditions that the staff have stated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vacate request with the one staff condition. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion passes. And Mike is now in the audience. Okay. F1, we did a couple hours ago. Moving on to discussion items, staff have anything for us?
Oh, come on. Let's talk about land use.
Be a party of one.
Seeing no other discussion items, look for a motion to adjourn.
Buckles, I move that the meeting be adjourned.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Thank you, my tradition.